...twenty-nine and to move the main part of the hospital up to that area. I've been assured by the hospital president that they intend to hold on to the property that they own in Tacoma Park and that they will work with the community to determine what would be put on that site. He was open to the notion of things like emergency services and primary care. And so I think that if we can successfully work with the hospital, I think that this could end up being a fairly reasonable and good compromise for both sides. I have been asked whether we are going to ask Jerry Stocks, who's the president of the hospital, to come make a presentation to the council. We are not because, in fact, there is a meeting on the first of May, which he is already planning to come, to a meeting of the Health Services Impact Committee, and the committee will be hearing a presentation from him and having a community discussion about what the community would like to see in terms of health services. So I very strongly encourage anybody who's interested in finding out more about this and in talking to the president of the hospital. I'm also planning to be there, and my guess would be some of the other council members are too. It is on Tuesday, May the fifth, I'm sorry, Tuesday, May the first, Tuesday, May the first, at 7:00 PM right here in this room. And anybody who wants to come is welcome to come. It was intended, it was always intended by the committee to be a public forum, and this would be a good time to find out more about what's going on and to raise any concerns or any questions that you have. So that's Tuesday, the first of May, at 7:00 PM in this room. The second thing I would like to bring to the attention of the council and the community is that this morning, in the county council's Management and Fiscal Policy Committee, there was consideration of the tax duplication payment that goes to Tacoma Park and to the other municipalities in Montgomery County. We are currently operating on a fairly old tax duplication formula, and the county executive had agreed to set up a county municipal committee to discuss changes in that formula. He also recommended that the amount of tax duplication payments that go to the municipalities remain at last year's level. According to the county's calculation of the formulas, all the municipalities would receive less than they did last year if they used the current formula. So he agreed to hold it harmless at last year's level while we have this discussion. Well, this morning, in the committee, the members of the county council at the committee basically decided to use the formula instead, which would result in a lower tax duplication payment to the city of Tacoma Park. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager in just a minute to talk a little bit about what that means for us. But I should emphasize that this was only a committee decision, and the full council will also get to take a look at this issue. And so if there's anybody who's concerned about this, you can contact the members of the county council. The members of the committee, the chair, Dutchy Trachtenberg, supported us on this, and the other two members of the committee voted against, Marilyn Praesner and Roger Berliner. We are going to be talking to both of those people, but we will also be talking to other council members, county council members also. We know, of course, council member Trachtenberg supported us in the committee. Mark Elrich has been extremely helpful. Of course, he knows this issue very well from his years on the council. And Valerie Irvin expressed support for the city's position on tax duplication payments during the campaign. So I assume that we've got some support on the council, so I should say that George Leventhal has been very sympathetic, although I don't know that he's actually made a commitment yet. But there is some positive, there are some people on the county council who are very positive, and we will be working to contact those and other members of the committee to let them know what the city's concerns are, as will the other municipalities in Montgomery County. I was there this morning, as were representative of both Rockville and Gaithersburg, and all of us made a very strong argument that the payment should not be cut. But as I said, we did not succeed. The vote was two to one to reduce them. Now, they did agree to put it on the reconciliation list, but I think it should be going in as a matter of course. Turn it over to Barb to elaborate a little bit on what that means to the city.
Thank you. The total amount that is sort of up for grabs, if you will, is just under $700,000 for all the municipalities. Tacoma Park certainly constitutes the largest share of that amount. Council may recall, when I presented my budget several weeks ago, I had indicated that the difference between what the county executive had recommended and the formula basis was about $214,000. That was based on numbers that we received from the county office of management and budget back in February. The numbers that were actually presented to the MFP committee today actually show that Tacoma Park has about $273,000 at risk from this decision. And basically, that's roughly equivalent to the two-cent property tax rate cut that is reflected in my proposed budget, just to give you an idea of the magnitude of that amount on the city. Obviously, the other way of dealing with this, if we're not successful, is as we go through the budget process, to look at expenditure cuts. But I do think that those will have a fairly dramatic effect on our ability to move some of the council priority areas forward. Obviously, this is of great concern to me. I know it's of great concern to my municipal colleagues who were there today, and I think certainly a lot of the staff's time working with the council over the next two weeks will be spent talking to our pro-administrative colleagues, as well as our elected officials about how to deal with this issue. If there's any questions the council has about the financial impact, I'd be happy to answer them. Other questions, Joy?
I do have a question. Can you give us some idea of what justified the change from the county executive to the county council proposal?
I mean, in terms of their rationale, Captain Ruffin Lane?
Yes.
From those, and the mayor can certainly correct me if she had a different impression. We had basically been preparing our budget as did all the municipalities, talked not only to the county OMB staff, but I also took the additional step to talk to the county executive office staff, just to try to dot the i's and cross the t's. And I think from the county executive office perspective, they recognized that any negotiations had been postponed due to the transition at the county, at the county executive office level. I think everyone's aware the city had been more than readily prepared to start negotiations some time ago. Certainly, the task committee gave us a lot of information to work on. When we had talked to the county about starting those negotiations, the former county executive, I think, did not feel it was his place to really undertake such a major initiative when he knew he would be leaving office. And so we found ourselves in sort of this no man's land with no one to negotiate with. I think from the perspective of those county council members who did not support the county executive's recommendation, they were merely, from my perspective, relying on the formula that had been entered into ten years ago and felt that that was something the municipalities had agreed to and that should be respected. I think the mayor made an excellent point, that there was no one to negotiate with, but that argument seemed to have fallen on deaf ears today.
Other questions? I completely agree with what Barb said. I would also note in the staff report that accompanied this item, there was a comment that if this money wasn't given to the municipalities, it could go toward county council priorities. So I think what it boiled down to was that, you know, the county, which has always sort of regarded that money as its money to give to us, was sort of thinking, well, we don't have to give you this part, so why don't we hold off on it?
I think, if I may, Mayor, the other thing I would add is, one of the committee members also mentioned, which was certainly somewhat alarming, made a number of comments about the income tax payments that the city receives. As some of you may know, by state law, we receive 17% of the income tax revenues being generated, you know, from the city, and that's by state law. This county council member happened to ask a lot of questions about that, asked whether or not that was factored into the duplication payments that we receive, and seemed to be suggesting that any income tax revenues that the municipalities received should somehow be considered an offset against the tax duplication payments. So the overall discussion was somewhat concerning for lots of reasons. I would also mention, I think, as the mayor mentioned, that representatives from Rockville and Gaithersburg were present today. I certainly don't, I'm not meaning to suggest there was something untoward about this. I think it's just a matter of workload, but the actual staff report for the tax duplication item actually did not get posted to the county's website until approximately six o'clock Friday evening. Our community and government liaison knew it was forthcoming. Suzanne made a point of looking for it, as I think some of the other municipalities did. But for most people, they were already home, obviously, at six o'clock on a Friday night. This happened, last week happened to be the week that many of the city managers were actually at a conference and were not even at work. And then the hearing was nine o'clock this morning. My suspicion would be if this item had been posted in a more timely fashion and the municipalities had had a better opportunity to get the word out, there probably would have been more municipal representatives there today, as it was, the three who had the most at risk, which would be Rockville, Gaithersburg, and Tacoma Park, were present.
And I would just like to second what the city manager said, that we really have thanks to Suzanne Ludlow for following this up and getting ahold of it as soon as it was posted and letting us know immediately. And I don't know, given that it was posted very late on Friday and the hearing was nine o'clock Monday morning, whether, if she had not been, you know, following this thing very closely, whether we would have known in time at all.
Can you tell me, approximately, how much money do we get from this 17%? I think my estimates for FY '08 are about $2.1 million. For my proposed budget, it's about 15%. It's probably one of our third-largest revenue sources. It's a significant amount of our operating revenues.
And when they were pointing this out, that we also got the revenues from the income tax, did they happen to note that we only get rebated for things that are paid for out of property taxes and that we don't get rebated for things that the county pays for out of income taxes or out of any other source?
I would say today's hearing was probably not the most conducive venue for having those types of discussions. I would say the county council member, and I think by his own admission is a new member of the county council, probably isn't as familiar with the issues as some of the, you know, more tenured members. I think a lot of those discussions will be coming up with the work of the joint task force, of which I'm a member. I think the ironic part about all of this, and a representative of the county executive staff was there, was trying to point out that the task force work is actually scheduled to get underway next Tuesday. I mean, we are just on the cusp of actually sitting down and having an opportunity to talk and to work through those issues. And I think that was an argument that the committee chair, Mrs. Trachtenberg, was very sensitive to, that in the grand scheme of the county's budget, $700,000 is not that much money. Everyone was committed to having this task force sit down and talk about it, try to come up with a formula that we could all agree on, so this wouldn't be a point of contention every year. And she personally, and she was the one person on the committee who felt, was supportive of the county executive's recommendations, that she thought the task force should be allowed to do its work.
Because by my count, just the recreation and the library alone are $2 million. And then there's all the administrative and overhead, and we're about to spend $90,000 on economic development in the New Hampshire corridor, and we don't get any of the sales tax dollars. When we were at MML last year, I remember the city of Frederick, Frederick, Maryland, the city of Frederick said they got sales tax dollars. I think maybe we should add that in the table about sales tax dollars as well, because if we have to do our own economic development, I think we should at least get some share of the sales tax increment that we gain off of that economic development.
Yeah. The way that the task force is actually structured is not just limited to tax duplication payments. It's actually considered a revenue-sharing task force. We had, the municipalities had a pre-meeting last week, week before last, and I think besides some of the issues like sales taxes, those municipalities who have hotels and motels are also not getting a share of those taxes. We are somewhat unique in that the hotels that we have in the city, used to be, obviously, in Prince George's County, so we actually do get some hotel motel tax, but cities like Rockville, Gaithersburg, who obviously have a very significant hotel presence, don't get a dime.
Wow. So, are there any other questions? Okay. Does anyone else have any items?
All right.
Okay. And then Bruce.
Let's see, I have a couple of things that came in by email. One of them is from someone from friends of Sligo Creek, who was talking about trash that's associated from multiple dumpsters behind the Essex House apartment building. And there's a creek back there that feeds into Sligo Creek. I'm going to give you this when I'm done. There's a creek back there that feeds into Sligo Creek and is feeding trash into the creek and wants to know what we can do about that. And then there's a long series of emails that I printed out for you that are about loitering in the Long Branch Park area that primarily involves the extension of Jackson, which basically becomes a walking path past Garland as it goes over into Ward Six, but Doug's not here. And all of the issues that they're having there, and it's very descriptive, and it doesn't look good at all. And it looks like maybe something we want to stop now. I'm happy that Washington Adventist Hospital is going to do some planning activities with the community. That was one of the first things that I got to talk to the Adventist president about when I ran for office, and I'm glad that they're going to be more inclusive about that and that they have changed their operation regarding what's going to happen with the land and that they have acknowledged that it's good to include the city in that planning. And I also want to say that it's important to me that all those negotiations are vested in the council. So I know that he's doing a presentation to the Health Services Impact Committee, but I personally want to make sure that that decision-making and processing really stays vested with the council and is not, that we don't even give the impression, basically, that we're delegating that activity to a committee, because I don't want to do that. I went to the American Planning Association meeting last week, and it was great. And when I wasn't going to things about affordable housing and rural housing and Indian housing, I got to go to a couple of sessions on municipal law and the changes in tree preservation ordinances. And so I'm looking forward to sharing some of that with our tree guy, the tree guy.
Also known as the arborist.
And also known as the arborist. I call him the tree guy, but Todd Bolton. And people doing things more about performance and about cover, total coverage, instead of, you know, just a prohibition on cutting trees down, other communities that have faced some of the same challenges that we have, and it was interesting to hear them share that. Let's see. I don't know if anyone else has noticed this, but this past week, there's just been an awful lot of sirens and ambulances. And I don't know if there's more police activity or if it's possible that there's some impact already from the Prince George's County Hospital, and people are shifting this direction already or not. But, boy, Ethan Allen has been lit with ambulance, there are ambulances primarily, and it's been noticeable. And I'm not home that much, I don't notice that kind of stuff, so that's significant.
Maybe that's the difference.
That's the difference. I've been gone, but I've had a lot of issues come up with dogs, constituents and dogs, and being, dog owners being good neighbors and the dogs themselves being good neighbors. And several conversations with people, the people who have the dogs and the people who live next door to and behind the people that have the dogs and the people who live up the street that have the dogs. And I thought maybe we could maybe put something out in the city publication, like the newsletter about you and your dog and being a good neighbor, what the laws are related to that, and if there's a problem with your neighbor and you don't think they're taking care of their dog, or they're taking care of their dog, but it's doing other things, like how can you respond to that effectively? Because what I have is a lot of people who are frustrated on both sides and not really good solutions. And maybe we might think about, I know that the mediation process has gone to the county now, but that's an emerging issue in my ward, or it's been emerging for a while, six months about.
I would say more like 16 years.
Okay. Well, it's been particularly active in the last six months. And myself, I'm a dog owner, so I feel the frustration. Also having a lot of issues around commercial intrusion, particularly in the Long Branch-Sligo I finally contacted Ike Leggett's office and got a response from the code enforcement people the very next day. It's very fascinating how that worked. And they came out, they did some code enforcement, which was good, solved a couple looming big problems, but 7401 flower is still a problem. And now there's a new doctor's name up on the sign, so there's a couple of doctors' names. So I wrote back to the permitting officer, but I just wanted you to know that. Hopefully, they'll reopen that case and reexamine that. But again, on a broader note, that seems to be an emerging challenge, particularly in the Long Branch area. I understand that somebody purchased the house, a house at the corner of, is it Central or Garland and one of the smaller streets, Davis. It was a large house that was for sale there. And the new owner has told the neighbors that he's going to put in commercial development on the ground floor and apartments. And this is basically an old giant, single-family house, and I don't know how much of it's already cut up. And he hasn't violated the yacht law yet, but it would be great to be able to connect with him before he spends a lot of money with a commercial storefront at the, you know, the corner of a solidly residential neighborhood. And maybe some outreach to real estate agents who were selling to let them know, you know, they have to know what these people tend to do with these places and see if they can help us so that people, we don't have a situation like we have with this doctor's office where this person has developed this into several suites for doctors now instead of a house, and we're just going to be battling this for a while, I think, going toe-to-toe. And then the last thing is about code enforcement. Had a few code enforcement actions in my ward, and I want to remind people how important it is to go through the proper permitting process. I have a neighbor who has to take down a garage that was built, you know, a new garage that was put in on a zero lot line that didn't get a permit for, doesn't comply with the code. It's painful to see that happen. And I just took down a deck that was put on the front of my house before I bought it that didn't have a permit, and so I took it down. As I took it down, it almost collapsed around me and reminded me of the reasons why we have a permitting process and we have people come out and check on these things. And those are my comments for the day.
Thank you. I'd like to request that staff do a little investigating of what status there is with WSSC and response to requests in the city and maybe get back to us with a sense of how our relations with WSSC are. What prompts this is what appears to be a water leak in the bottom quarter of the 300 block of Lincoln, and it's been there for a good long time. That bottom quarter of the block now resembles more closely a stream bed than a road. I see a couple of people, a couple of colleagues who drive that section who know exactly what I'm talking about.
Exactly what you're talking about.
And what I'm concerned about is, in addition to the timeliness of WSSC responding to an issue like that, the effect on the city's infrastructure. I can imagine the, all of the structure under the road and other utilities possibly being undermined, and I can imagine this just getting to be quite a nightmare because of lack of response on their part. So if we could have a report back on how responsive they have been, what kinds of issues are on the table now and what their response will be.
Are you sure it's not a private symposium?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, just two announcements. One is a symposium that I was happy to attend today at Center for American Progress, and I was pleased to see Governor O'Malley presenting his plans for State Stat, which is based on his initiative in Baltimore City with City Stat. I was very impressed by the acclaim that they have received, as well as the results that they've achieved because of that process of reviewing city services every two weeks with the people who can make things happen and the data that is collected and the accountability that is achieved through that. And I appreciate the city manager looking into that program. I know that we have struggled as a city to adequately track our services, problems with our services, and resolution of those problems with our services. So I just point you in that direction, and hopefully we'll see better results in the city in the future. The second announcement is the Old Tacoma Business Association is having a cleanup in the Old Tacoma area, which is Tacoma Junction through Old Town to Fourth Street in Tacoma, DC, and that's this Saturday at 9:00 AM. And I hope as many people as possible will come out and pitch in to make sure our Old Town looks shiny. Thank you.
Ruth?
The dogs issue was one I didn't expect to comment on, but I've actually heard from a number, I don't know whether the other council members have had this experience, of folks who own dogs wondering what to do to organize a dog park. And I did a little investigating, what to do to organize a dog park, and, you know, basically you've got to get the county to weigh in on it. Be interested if there were other, if the other council members knew of people in Tacoma Park who were interested in working on that issue. And if so, then we could get a group of folks together and talk about, you know, next steps and how to do it. I got some help from somebody who's actually organized a few dog parks in Virginia, so she has a fair amount of experience on how to sort of, how to do it, what things to avoid, kind of lessons learned idea. So let me know if you have some on that front. The other thing I want to say is that on Saturday, the tenant associations in Tacoma Park had a very successful summit, I guess they called it, with city staff. The city staff were just terrific. They ran a great, a really great meeting. It was a pleasure to see people who actually knew how to prepare an agenda, stick to the agenda, move along, keep everybody involved, keep everybody feeling like they were part of the meeting. There's a lot of really good ideas shared. And for me, it just showed the importance of supporting the tenant associations, because they are a great mechanism for getting information to our city residents. It's very difficult to get into apartment buildings, but you can get into them through the tenant association. It's a great way to pass information on.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Boy, it's after eight, and it's been an interesting meeting. We haven't even gotten to the first agenda. I put a lot of good information out there today. I just wanted to ask Mayor Porter, I received an email this week that we're planning to have an executive function session next Monday night, but the email didn't say anything about what the topic was, and I know there's several things I could guess might be the topic, but I wonder if we can know what the topic's going to be.
We are going to talk to the city manager about some management issues.
Okay. I just always get concerned, you know, I am interested in openness with the public openness in our government. I'm always concerned that in the executive sessions that we're limited to not discussing policy issues at all. And so I just want to make sure that this is going to be more of a briefing and not really discussion of policy.
The, in terms of the management of the city, it's the city manager who's responsible for doing that. We can discuss with the city manager anything we'd like about the performance of her job. My intention is that this be mainly a briefing, but obviously any council member is able to talk to the city manager about anything she's doing.
Okay. But not about new policies, right?
Generally, we try not to do new policies in closed session anyway.
Okay. I thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Let's move on to the, I don't know of additional agenda items, let's move on to the public comment period. This is the time for comments on anything except the items on our special session agenda that would include the items on our work session agenda and anything else anyone would like to bring before the council. I would ask, when you come forward, if you'd identify yourself and also if you could keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I would like to thank the fire department and the police department. I would like to, uh, thank the, uh, the fire department and the police department, uh, you know, Tina Smith for coming over, Officer Tina Smith, for coming over and giving a great presentation on the, uh, evacuation routes and the safety, uh, fire safety and stuff. I thought it was really, really educational and informative. And the second thing I'd like to do is invite everybody Saturday to come down to the, uh, to the demonstration we're having on the mall. We have, we're going to spell out the word impeach, I-M-P-E-A-C-H, down on the mall with human beings. It's going to be great, so we'd like to get as many people down there Saturday morning as possible so we can really have a really good presentation on that. And also, I've noticed, uh, coming back from the store a lot, you know, you know, on Maple Avenue in, uh, Philadelphia, some of those buses stink. And here it is, Earth Day, and Tacoma Park is supposed to be a great environmental, uh, city. And some of them, you know, they, you know, they'll pass you by in the car, or you'll be parking along Maple Avenue to bring your groceries in, and they go by and they literally nauseate you, they make you sick, they stink, you know? And I don't know why, it's the ride-on buses, the, uh, the big, uh, metro buses, you know, in Silver Spring, we, they don't seem to do that as much. But, uh, I think it's either the 17 or the 25 ride-on bus, because those are the only two that go on that road, on Maple Avenue. And, uh, and, uh, you can hear their brakes, you know, they squeal and make this horrible sound as they, as they approach you, but, uh, the sound doesn't bother me as much because I can't see and it's good to hear them coming anyway. But the thing that I can't stand is they smell, you know? And I, I don't know if there's something wrong with their engines or with the city, council can somehow approach the, uh, the, uh, operators of these buses and see what they can do about them, because, uh, they smell worse than dog droppings, I'm telling you. I mean, this is supposed to be Earth Day, we're supposed to be an environmental city. We've got to do something about that because, man, uh, I, I almost got sick, you know, last, uh, Sunday, the other day coming back. And it was bad, it was Sunday when I came back from David, David, we came back from a trip, and the bus passed us and, boy, oh, boy, it was bad news. And I don't know if it's, they're burning oil or what it is, but, uh, you know, it's a, the cost of gasoline going up to, uh, over $3 a gallon, I don't think we need to be wasting our, our resources like that and, uh, also wasting our health like that too, because I don't know what that's doing to people with asthma, people with, uh, you know, lung conditions and the other, uh, people who are maybe a lot older than I am. I don't know what that's doing, but, man, some of those buses are real smell.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Actually, you're not the first person who's, um, made that complaint, and, um, I don't know if the city manager or, um, Joy can correct me if I say it wrong, but my understanding is that some of the smaller gasoline-powered buses are quite old and they aren't functioning very well. And Ride On is in fact planning to replace them and has asked us if we, if we see a particularly noxious bus to let them know, and they will put that on their list of priority replacements. They are planning to make some replacements with some more efficient buses anyway. So, um, you know, if you are aware of, if you can find out which bus that is and let us know, we will certainly notify them that we've uncovered another noxious bus and let them know about it.
Nauseated by, I mean.
Yes, yes, certainly.
Also, Mayor Porter.
I, I spoke, uh, Mr. Lovelace, I, uh, this is Councilmember Siemens. I spoke with Ride On, uh, last week about the buses, and as Mayor Porter said, they are planning to replace, uh, some of the more stinky buses in Tacoma Park area, but they also made the observation that, uh, they are the, uh, diesel-powered buses that seem to be, uh, causing the most objections from the community. And in fact, uh, it's the gasoline-powered buses that will probably replace them, so, uh, the, uh, the smell may be offensive to us, but it may be less detrimental to the environment than the replacement buses.
Uh-uh. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to see, invite you to come over to our, uh, luncheon sometime we have at Franklin Apartments every third Thursday. Maybe you can give, uh, an, uh, presentation to our residents over at Franklin Apartments. I'd love to see you come over, Mayor Porter.
Okay, I'd be happy to talk to you more about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Celebrate Earth Day, get rid of those smellers.
Anyone else?
I just want to, uh, plug the House and Garden Tour.
And, and, Lorraine, can you identify yourself with the record?
Oh, my name is Lorraine Pierceall. I'm, uh, with Historic Tacoma, and I'd like to just remind the community, House and Garden Tour is on Sunday, May 6th from 1 to 5. It's called Carol Connections. The tickets are available at Mark's Kitchen, the Food Co-op Now and Then, American Craft, Big Bad Woof, and The Culture Shop. And they're $15 in advance and they're $20 on the day of the tour. Day of the tour, tickets will be sold and brochures can be picked up at Morrison Park, which is right opposite the Food Co-op, uh, at the corner of Ethan Allen and Carroll Avenues. Uh, really want to ask the community to come out for the tour. All of the money that we raise is going to the restoration of the facade of 7328, which we are going to be able to do with the help of the Main Street Maryland Program, and very, many thanks to John Hume and, uh, to, uh, our sponsors for the tour. We have had many wonderful sponsors this year and notably the city of Tacoma Park, but we should be able to restore the entire front facade with the, with the proceeds of the tour. So please, please come out for it. We really, uh, want to ask your support in this, and thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this point? All right, seeing no one else, we will move on to the city manager's update.
I just have a very brief report in the interest of time, uh, just a few items related to the community center that I wanted to share with the council and the community. Finally, after many months of delay, the, um, new elevator is up and running in the building. Um, certainly, we had hoped to be ready some time before now, but it is available now. And the timing couldn't be better because starting tomorrow, we will be making some modifications to the Elevator 1, the original elevator just behind, uh, this room, uh, to make it more ADA accessible. There's some modifications that we have to make. Those will get underway tomorrow and will continue through the rest of this week, so that elevator will be out of service for, um, much of that time. Wanted to share with the council that we did have a meeting today with, um, James F. Knott Construction to, uh, kind of continue our efforts to try to get all the issues related to, uh, Phase 1, um, resolved. Um, there were a number of items that they have, thankfully, addressed, uh, finally in the, uh, in recent weeks. Uh, there are certainly some major items that are still a matter of discussion between the parties. Uh, the two items, um, that I'm thinking of are certainly the flooring on the public safety level, as I had mentioned to the council, I believe, maybe two weeks ago. There is agreement, um, that the flooring, uh, that is in the public safety lobby, um, was not installed properly. James F. Knott has acknowledged, um, that that is an issue that they are responsible for, and the parties do agree on, um, what needs to take place. Um, at this point, James F. Knott is having, um, some discussions with their subcontractor to determine who's the best person to actually make the repairs and to give us a timeline for, um, getting those done. Uh, the other item that's still outstanding that's of some significance is certainly the stormwater problems in the rear of this building. Um, that will require some further discussion. Um, they had submitted a corrective plan, if you will. Um, the architect, um, and the design team did review that. I did not feel that it was workable, and we've suggested, um, some other work that we felt needed to be done. James F. Knott doesn't think that's what needs to be done, so there'll still be some discussion about that. I guess the good news is that we all agree that there is some corrective work that is required, and James F. Knott is prepared to do that. Now we just need to define the scope. Um, council has my assurance that we'll make sure that, uh, whatever is done will fix the problems. So unless there's any questions, that'll conclude my report.
Any questions for the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Barb, I did, uh, have the opportunity to ride the new elevator. Glad to see it, uh, it works, it's a little faster than our old elevator. But I did have a question about the access to the, uh, for council members to the, uh, third floor from parking in the, uh, parking lot in the front of the building. I see that we can no longer get, uh, go up the steps and get off on the, um, on this floor. Uh, the door's locked and it has no key access. It has no pass card access to that door.
Um, I'll, I'll talk to the IT staff and figure out what needs to be done.
I think, I don't think there is a card reader on that, on that door.
Which door are you referring? I'll make sure I'm saying the right one. It's the door from the stairwell into, from the, from the first floor stairwell to the second floor. Okay, let me look into that.
All right, thank you.
I think they're, Terry, I think they're trying to force us to ride the elevator.
That's scary.
Any, any other comments or questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none. Uh, we will move on to the first agenda item. The first item on our agenda this evening is a, uh, presentation on the state of Montgomery College Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. Dr. Brad Stewart and, um, several of his colleagues are here to make the presentation. Um, just for the council's information, um, I've set this up as a presentation. Um, I, I'm sure Dr. Stewart would be happy to address questions or, you know, informational comments and questions, but if we want to have a discussion, I don't, I didn't really put enough time on the agenda. If we want to take up any follow-up discussions, I would be happy to schedule a follow-up discussion time for the council.
We're going down front to see this, right?
Um, yes, I believe that we are.
I'm sorry to chase all of you out of your very comfortable chairs. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city manager, uh, and the council for inviting me, uh, to do this, uh, this evening. Uh, and I would like to apologize for not being here sooner. Uh, next month will mark my second year as Vice President Provost at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, uh, and I brought, uh, the Director of Government Relations from Montgomery College, Susan Madden, who is a Tacoma Park resident. I live in Silver Spring, uh, for moral support. And what I hope to do is take you through a quick tour, uh, of the state of the campus at Montgomery, uh, College's Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, uh, and then have some time for some questions. Uh, what you're looking at here is the Student Services Center, uh, and I get to do something very nice tonight. Uh, this is now the Charlene R. Nunley Student Services Center, uh, at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, named after, uh, Dr. Nunley, who just retired from, as the president of the college, and she is responsible, uh, for the rebirth of our campus, uh, for this building, for the Health Sciences Center, uh, for a couple of other buildings, the Capress Arts Center and the Cultural Arts Center, uh, that you'll see, uh, as well. Uh, you have probably seen the Montgomery College Mission Statement before. Uh, two highlights, uh, "We Change Lives." Uh, and, uh, we are very serious about that, uh, particularly those for our students, uh, and, and we document that at every chance that we get. Uh, and I can tell you literally hundreds of stories that I've picked up in the last two years about changing students' lives, uh, but that's something for another time. Uh, what you see on the right is the new vision statement for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. Uh, this was produced by our faculty and staff and some students in a, a planning retreat about a year ago. Uh, we see ourselves as an urban neighborhood campus that celebrates and embraces diversity. If you've ever been on our campus, you know that that, uh, is a true claim, while responding to community, regional, national needs by offering a comprehensive educational experience with unique signature programs in health sciences. That's our specialty number one, and in the visual and performing arts, that's specialty number two, uh, for the campus. Since I've been at, uh, at the campus, I have, uh, talked to a lot of groups about what we do at Montgomery College, and I keep running into, uh, one particular theme, and that is, nobody knows exactly what we're up to. Uh, they have sort of a general idea of what community colleges do, uh, but they don't know much about Montgomery College and particularly the Tacoma Park campus, uh, Silver Spring campus specifically. Uh, the college is a general education liberal arts transfer institution, and by that I mean that all, the majority of the students who come to us want a four-year degree. We ask them on the way in the door, and that is their plan. They want to graduate, uh, from college with a four-year degree, and we are the first two years in that particular, uh, journey for them, and sometimes it takes them three or four or five years to earn the first two years, about 60 credits. Uh, but we transfer a huge number of students every year, uh, to the University of Maryland College Park, the University of Maryland, Baltimore County, uh, and the rest of the University of Maryland system as well across, as, across the country. Uh, we're particularly proud of our engineering program, uh, which transfers students to MIT, Georgia Tech, uh, in engineering programs across the country. Uh, at Tacoma Park Silver Spring, uh, we are also a health sciences campus. We are doing everything we can, uh, to meet the shortage of health professionals, uh, in Maryland. We graduated for the first time, uh, last year, over a hundred nurses, 90% of whom passed the NCLEX exam or the licensing exam on the first try. Uh, we also have programs in physical therapy assisting, uh, diagnostic metals, medical sonography, don't ask me what that is for sure, uh, surgical technology. We have a fully functioning operating room on the campus to train these folks, uh, and a number of other health science programs. Uh, in other words, we are training, uh, the young folks who will take care of all of us in just a few years, or at least most of us in our own. Uh, at Tacoma Park Silver Spring, we also specialize in the visual and performing arts. Uh, many of you know what used to be called the Maryland College of Art and Design on Georgia Avenue is now Montgomery College's School of Art and Design, and they have about three weeks left on Georgia Avenue, uh, before they move down here, uh, to the west side of campus into the Capress Arts Center, uh, AKA the Old Giant Bakery. Uh, it will now smell like turpentine and clay, uh, and other forms of art materials. It won't smell like cinnamon rolls anymore, uh, but we think it'll be a much better, uh, use of the facility, uh, and we hope to have a dedication ceremony this fall, and I'll make sure you all get an invitation. Other things we have on our campus are extensive academic advising programs, uh, counseling programs, uh, tutoring programs. Uh, we have over 20,000 visits annually, uh, to our Math and Science Tutoring Center. Uh, that's probably not a surprise, uh, that a lot of students struggle with those two subjects. Uh, AELP is our American English Language Program. If you've been on our campus, you realize that almost all of our students, uh, their families or they are from someplace else. Uh, on our particular campus, we have large numbers of students from, from various African countries, a growing number from Eastern Europe, some Latino students, uh, and they're almost all from somewhere else. And then we're also in the ESOL business, English for speakers of other languages. Um, Montgomery County Public Schools handed that over, uh, to the college last year. Here's the economic and community impact. Uh, we have about 5,600 students this year enrolled in 150 different courses. Uh, obviously, there are multiple sections of some of those courses, uh, but that just gives you sort of an idea on the credit side of what it looks like. The non-credit enrollment is about 2,600 students spread across 440 different courses, uh, ranging from, uh, one-night art classes in ceramics, uh, to a year-long vet tech program, uh, for, uh, to take care of the dog problem that some of you may be experiencing. Uh, as far as I can pull out from the budget, uh, the operating budget for the campus is approximately $36 million. Disentangling the Tacoma Park Silver Spring operating budget for the rest of the college is almost an impossible task. Uh, this, almost 90% of that $36 million is salaries. And then the capital budget expenditures at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus from 2002 through 2009 will total approximately $143 million, uh, which will involve four new buildings and the renovation of a fifth. Here's one I'm particularly proud of. In 2006, 350 of our students performed 4,200 hours approximately of community service in Tacoma Park and Silver Spring. Uh, and we're also the community's college in the sense that, uh, that we let community groups have rooms on campus for meetings, often at no charge, and, uh, last year, uh, we use a term called room hours. called room hours, and that totaled 1,784 room hours. This is the new president of Montgomery College, Dr. Brian K. Johnson, who comes to us from Pittsburgh in the Community College of Allegheny County. If you really want to read what that says, and you didn't get a copy like the council members did, if you go to www.montgomerycollege.edu and click on the president's link, you'll get to see that. He has hit the ground running. How many council people has he been to see, all of them, and how many times? Probably in the last, he's been on the job about 70 days and has probably at, at least 70 contacts with local and state elected officials, which is with our hands out. This is the west campus of Montgomery College, and this is the site map. In the upper left-hand corner is the Cultural Arts Center, which I'll show you a fancy picture of in a minute. If you've driven past the corner of Georgia and the east-west highway, you've noticed there's a green fence up, and we're digging a hole in the ground. That will be a 500-seat auditorium and a studio theater and a dance studio by fall of 2009. Directly below that on the screen is a building that many of you have been in, the Health Sciences Center, where all of those programs that I talked about earlier are located. Directly to the right of there, it says what we call King Street Arts Center, which is now called the Capress Arts Center. The Capress Foundation, Family Foundation donated $3 million to, to the cost of the building. We are funding that one through our foundation, private money, and that is about to open this fall, and it will house all of our visual arts programs, including the School of Art and Design. If the, probably the best thing on the slide is a little bit further to the right there is a 350-space parking structure that we're also funding on our own because the county and the state don't pay for parking any longer, which will help deal with the parking problems in South Silver Spring. And then there's one site left for another building, and we're thinking about that right now. We don't have anything specific in mind. This is the Health Science Center that you've seen. Came online in 2004, and at the other side of the building is its most important feature. It contains a clinic run by Holy Cross Hospital for low-income and non-insured members of our community. All of the new buildings have a community component to them so that we can live up to our name as the community's college. This is the Old Giant Bakery. This is what it will look like in the Capress Arts Center. Building contains 130,000 mediasignable square feet. It is the largest building at Montgomery College at the present time, although we're thinking about building a much bigger science building on the Rockville campus, but we have this little problem that you're having as well with local and state elected officials coughing up the money. We need to do that. We would be glad to put your name on that science building or any of the other buildings except this one for somewhere between $3 and $5 million, I believe, is the price tag right now. This is the Cultural Arts Center on the corner of Georgia and the east-west highway. This is a 500-seat auditorium slash theater. This is a dance studio in the upper left-hand corner, and it also contains 125-seat studio theater. And that is the west campus. Now, this is the east campus in Tacoma Park, except at Chicago Avenue here. If you'll notice that the new Student Service Center is cut into two-thirds and one-third between Tacoma Park and Silver Spring, and it shows the current buildings that are on the campus. The one down in the lower right corner is the Commons Building, which we are currently attempting to renovate. We are in the middle of the process of demolition, but we ran into a little snag with the state in terms of funding their half of the capital project there, and so we are now currently trying to talk the county into something they rarely do, which is forward fund the com, the project for us so that we can get that done. And it, it will hold nine new classrooms, a computer lab, and offices in a conference center in the Commons Building. This is the east campus parking structure. It was, once upon a time, the ugliest building in all of Montgomery College. In the last year, if you've driven by, you'll notice that we spent about three-quarters of a million dollars sprucing it up a little bit. We didn't have much to work with, but I'm a native of Iowa, and I think we have made a silk purse out of a sow's ear here. The metal things on the side will soon be home to some plants native to Maryland, which will grow up the side of it, and we'll turn it into an Ivy League parking garage. Sorry, that's a bad joke. And last slide, near and long-term renovation projects. I already told you about the Commons, and across the street from the Commons, in Jim Evans' front yard, is a building called the Pavilion of Fine Arts, and that is currently where our art program, visual arts program, is located, but the folks there are moving across the tracks and across the bridge to the other west campus, and so we are going to try to turn that into some classrooms and some office space. The county is not being, or the state, neither the state or the county are being particularly cooperative in funding that project as well. So we're all in this together. They're taking money from you guys and from us. Science North and Science South are the three-story buildings on the west side of the campus, just off of Fenton Street. We are currently looking at several different options for renovating those buildings. The Learning Resources Center is what you all know as our library. They're not called that anymore, and that is in our facilities master plan for renovation. And then finally, I came here tonight to make you a little bit of an offer. Now, Susan will kick me if I go too far with this. She's already growling. And so, the last time I was here, you guys had quite a discussion about the fact that you can't afford a gymnasium in this facility. Well, we have one. It needs renovation. And in fact, what I would like to do is explore the possibility of transforming what we call Falcon Hall, the name of our athletic teams, into a community and fitness center. It is, in a sense, functioning that way already. Do any of you swim every morning in our pool? There are literally a half a dozen to a dozen folks who come early in the morning and jump in our pool for their exercise before they hop on the metro to go to work down in the district, or take off in their cars to work in Montgomery County. And I have talked a little bit to one of Senator McCulkey's aides, who thinks it's a nice idea. Talked to some folks who live right next to us about this idea as well, and we would like to explore the possibility of adding some meeting rooms for the community, perhaps that could be used as classrooms during the day, renovating the swimming pool in the athletic facility. And I see a partnership between the city of Tacoma Park, the county, the state, and the federal government, and private donors to help pay for this. And so we're just now starting to kick that idea around. I mentioned it to the two executive vice presidents, who are my bosses, and they said, "Interesting, let's think about it," and that's where we are with that particular idea. And that's a quick tour of Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus of Montgomery College. Does anyone have any questions? Do we have time for questions, Mayor?
Why don't we go up to the thing so that people can hear our questions as well as your answers? Well, thank you. That was very helpful. I do appreciate that information, and certainly an interesting proposal about your, your fitness center. We'll have to, we'll have to think about that.
I wouldn't call it a proposal yet.
A suggestion, an idea, a, a, what do you, what do you call a proposal before it becomes a proposal, or? Concept plan. Is anybody else who would like to make a comment at this point? Go ahead. Questions?
Thank you, Brad. I, I appreciate you coming to the council. We always look forward to your presentations and finding out what the college's goals are, as well as ways that you would like to strengthen the partnership with the city. And I'm, I'm excited about some of the developments you've, you've named and the things that are coming up in the near term and long term. I, I look forward to the committee that the city council has set up continuing to be a dynamic part of this. And just for information, there have been several people who have resigned from that committee, but we have a, a good number of people who are interested in, in serving on that committee, and their next meeting is May 3rd. I, I believe that the, the college is a part of that. I hope that you will feel free to come to that May 3rd meeting. It's here at the Community Center at 7:00 P.M.
Okay, this is the first time I've heard about it, so I'll see what I can do on my calendar.
Thank you.
And we'll have somebody there. And I forgot to mention that I'd be happy to come back and see you all at least once a year, and more often if you would like, so just give me a call.
That's a, that's a good idea. Appreciate that. Okay. Are there any comments on the presentation? Questions on the presentation? Yes, Terry?
Well, comment first. I, I thank you for coming tonight, and I really, you know, offer the, the thanks for the presentation, but also it's remarkable the growth that we're seeing with the college and, and really, you know, some of the new buildings are, you know, great benefit to the community, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also thank you for bringing the idea about the fitness center to us early in the process. I think it has some merits that we should discuss further, and so I, I look forward to you coming back to the council and talk about that, or, or some work sessions maybe with the city manager. I agree that, that you should come back here periodically because you are a significant resource in this city. You're a major entity within the city, and you are located, at least half-located now, in a very important neighborhood in our city, and it's a neighborhood that, as you're looking at, at your growth and, and expansion, I think it's even more important than it's been in the past that you work closely with the city and, and with the neighborhood so that we can protect that neighborhood and, and still work with you on your growth plans so that everybody comes out a winner.
Well, I've been here for two years, and the relationships between the community and the college have been great, and I look forward to continuing those with the MANAC Committee, with the North Tacoma Citizens Association, with Historic Tacoma. We like to show our plans to everybody. We've got lots of nice pictures and plans, and we try not to keep any of that stuff secret. So we're always willing to engage the community in the dialogue about anything that we're up to. If you go back 30 years, probably we weren't very good at that, or at least so I've been told, but for the last two years and as long as I'm here, if you have any questions at all, I'll be glad to show up on a minute's notice and try to give you the answers.
I really appreciate that, and I, I hope that you'll look at ways that you can work even more closely with the, with the community as we look for ways to work more closely with you.
You can count on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Congress?
Yes, my, my youngest son actually goes to Montgomery College.
We love that.
He's taken some classes at the Tacoma Park campus. He really likes it. And we've been very impressed with it, too. Pardon me?
Is that a conflict of interest?
It's probably not a conflict of interest because I doubt if Reuben is making money off the deal.
No, quite the contrary.
He pays the tuition, right? There's no conflict.
We pay the tuition. Yes, definitely. I am really happy to see the growth of the west campus part of the college because I think it's a, you know, a win-win situation. Site where you're, the kind of traditional historic site is very small and cramped. I've been there many times. It's hard to see how you can really expand on that site even if you wanted to, and so I'm really glad to see the, the plans for using the west campus site. And I hope you'll keep in mind that future building has a great place for things, for, for some of your larger projects that you, that you have in mind, rather than trying to shoehorn them onto the current campus.
Message received.
Well, I want to thank you again for coming and making a presentation to us on this. I, I do hope we can work very closely on this. You noted that the relationship between the community and the college is better than it was at one time, long before either of our parents here, but, and I, I know that's true, and I very much appreciate the role the college has taken, that you have taken and that your predecessor took in terms of working more closely with the, with the council and with the city in term, in terms of trying to make more positive impacts on the, on the campus and doing it in such a way to protect the surrounding neighborhood. So I, I want to thank you again for the work, your work with the city, and to say that I hope we continue to work in a, in a mutually beneficial way on some of your future plans.
Sure we will, and I've gotten over my disappointment that Jim Evans has been breakfast at the provost's house. I thought that was what it was during my interview, but I was quickly corrected. Thanks again, and please call me at any time.
He'll be late to make breakfast for you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Moving on now to the first item on our special session agenda. We have a resolution recognizing Adventist, Advent Community Services Annual Community Cleanup. I had the honor of being asked to thank the participants as they, as they embarked on this cleanup. I know that Councilmember Siemens and his wife were there to participate also, and there were 400 students from Tacoma Academy, Sligo Adventist, and John Evans Andrews who helped with this cleanup, and they did quite a bit of work, quite a bit of cleanup, and they got some pizza afterwards, and, but they did an extremely good job, and we do very much appreciate the work that he, that they did. I wanted to, I won't read the whole resolution, but I just wanted to mention the, the entities that we're expressing our appreciation for, because there were many, many entities that participated in this. Approximately 400 students from Tacoma Park Area Adventist Schools, Ron Wiley, Executive Director of Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington, Dunbar Henry, Principal of Tacoma Academy, Larry Rich, Principal of Sligo Adventist School, David Waller, Principal of John Evans Andrews School, Erwin Mack, Chair of Adventist Community Action Council, and Jerry Stocks, President of Washington Adventist Hospital. Should mention that the hospital provided a couple of nurses to take care of any scrapes or bumps that might occur during the cleanup. So does someone want to move this? Okay. Is there any council discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Porter. I, as Mayor Porter said, my wife and I went out and participated with this cleanup, but it was just stunning to see the number of students that were there to work. As the resolution says, it was over 400 students there for the day to, to walk through the streets of our city and, and through a neighborhood that receives a lot of litter daily, and they walked along the streets, through the parking lots, around the various businesses, and, and pick up the trash. I think it was, it was interesting to see this year that it didn't look like as much trash as, as we've picked up in, in past years. I'd like to, to maybe think that, that by cleaning up the streets, people aren't throwing as much litter out, and maybe that's the reason it was less this year. Maybe that remains to be seen with future, future years, but nonetheless, I, I appreciate the work that all those students did and the, and the people that organized it, and I would just observe, too, that this was a, an all-Adventist And I would just observe, too, that this was an all-Adventist project. We had all the different Adventist organizations in the city participating in this. And I think that's a tribute to Mr. Mack and his group, the Adventist Community Action Council, which has worked over the last couple of years to pull the various Adventist organizations in the city together to work on projects like this. So I thank you, Mr. Mack.
Are there any other comments? Are there any public comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a resolution on a proposed subdivision of 99 Ritchie Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The property at 99 Ritchie Avenue owner, the property owner is proposing to subdivide the property into two lots. There's currently a house on that. The council did review this earlier, and this proposal went to the Development Review Committee at the county. And since then, the applicant has worked with both the county and the city in order to meet recommendations of city staff and county staff. And I've attached a resolution reflecting those recommendations that were included in the site plan. And staff recommends that the council discuss and consider the resolution, which would be passed in order to retain the, basically to retain the recommendations that are on, that are reflected in the site plan through the approval process at Park and Planning. And so those recommendations are to retain the reduced right-of-way. Normally, a greater right-of-way is requested, but there's a wall on the existing, the property that has the existing house, and we do not want to be responsible for maintaining the wall on the private property owner's property. We would also not want, normally a sidewalk would be constructed on a new subdivision, and we do not want a sidewalk because there's a very large oak tree on that property. And so a sidewalk would require removal of the oak tree. And finally, the TreeSave Plan was developed both with recommendations from the city arborists and from the environmental planner at Park and Planning in order to save several very large oak trees on the property, which were important to the community at large and obviously meet the city's goals for retaining large trees, large valuable trees on properties. And so this proposal will go to the planning board on May 17th, and if adopted, this resolution would then be included in the staff recommendations from, in the staff recommendation packet and also considered in the recommendations that the Park and Planning staff writes for the planning board, for Montgomery County Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. Have you received any other comments you want to move?
I had just one question, that is, about community response or comments on this. Have you received any?
The community, I did contact the community early on, and they've been notified that this is going before the council. And their main concern was the saving the trees. And I also did speak to the adjacent property owner.
And we also did discuss this at the Ritchie Citizens Association meeting in the neighborhood. I would like to move the resolution.
Okay. Someone like to second this? Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional council comments or questions? Bruce, you may call me.
I just want to be sure I understand the second resolved clause about not requiring construction of the sidewalk on the new lot at this time, and that's to retain, that is tied to retaining the tree.
Correct.
There would be potential problems if the sidewalk went in now for that tree?
The tree is actually where the sidewalk would be.
Okay. And there's a requirement in there that basically says at some point in the future there will need to be a sidewalk?
We do not have a provision in the city to hold funding for a sidewalk, and neither does the county. So we did not require that as part of this, as part of this process.
Because I know that in some cases along there, there were some difficulties in getting the ability to put a sidewalk in, and there's some discontinuity to that sidewalk.
We will, we are gaining the right-of-way, so there will be a 10-foot right-of-way along the frontage of that property, but we will not actually get the installation of the sidewalk. So the right-of-way will become, the, I'm sorry, the first 10 feet of that property will become part of the city right-of-way so that in the future, when the city does intend to put in a sidewalk, we have that right-of-way to use.
We don't currently have that right-of-way?
No. It's a narrow street. The right-of-way in that area is very narrow. It's an older.
So the 39-inch tree is currently the owner's tree, and it becomes a city tree?
Correct. But I think it's.
I wish we had, I wish we had a mechanism to ensure that there were a sidewalk in there. I know that there have been discussions in the past about, you know, kind of who has sidewalks and who doesn't, and if the people who don't have sidewalks want sidewalks. One of my colleagues has always pointed out that that was reflected in the price that people paid for their houses if there were sidewalks and they were put in at that time as opposed to now, you know, kind of who's going to pay for the sidewalks, whether the city puts them in, whether it's a special assessment. So I wish we had a mechanism for ensuring that at some point in the future, when the city deems it advisable that when the tree is no longer there and the sidewalk would be helpful, that the owner were responsible for paying for the sidewalk.
Unfortunately, I think because of the time, because it is a tree and it can grow for a lot longer, we don't have that.
Or that we even just had the ability to put in to say, you know.
An escrow, a sidewalk escrow.
Yeah, something so that it isn't just, oh, well, they didn't do anything about it, so the city has to do it at some point in the future. I wish we had a mechanism that was an effective way to do that.
We will be looking at sidewalks, and as we look at that, I think that's one thing that we should look at in terms of our staff analysis of future installation of sidewalks.
I was actually going to ask the same question. So there's, it looks to me like there's sidewalk that currently goes all the way up to the apron, and then the tree trunk is like five feet away from the current concrete apron that leads into the gravel driveway?
Yes.
Is that right? And then does the sidewalk pick up again on the other side anywhere?
There is no sidewalk on Geneva.
The other question that I have is, it looks like the gravel driveway on proposed lot B?
B.
Actually provides access for lot A.
Correct. And it will continue.
But it's on the property of the lot B. Why wouldn't you just make your property line so that that driveway was on the lot A?
Well, in Montgomery County, there's a certain amount of road frontage that you're required to have on your property. And so I believe that's the reason that the frontage is developed that way. But I'm not, I don't know, the applicant's here. I'm not sure if she knows.
That's silly. For all intents and purposes, that driveway belongs to lot A, and it's only on paper. So, all right, I don't have to argue with that because that's way beyond the city, but that's, I'm just going to say, that's silly.
And when this is plotted, there will be an easement provided to lot A.
Sure.
On the lot B.
Otherwise, they won't be able to get to their lot.
Right.
I just like cleaner arrangements than, if you could avoid an easement, I would avoid it, but whatever. The other thing is, do we have the ability to do impact fees when people make changes? I mean, it's too late for this project, but in general, related to the sidewalk issue, isn't it possible that we could do impact fees and have, not an escrow account, but the law requires that the impact fee be spent on the thing for which it's been exacted, but.
I believe that the city can develop additional regulations on top of the zoning ordinance. For example, we have our own ordinance related to stormwater. And I know that some cities have additional requirements regarding size, build-out, and other items that are on top of the zoning ordinance, but that also require enforcement on the part of the city. I'm not su, I mean, we can look into whether or not impact fees are something that the city can require or ask for proffers.
Or an exaction.
Right.
So I think there is actually a mechanism. Question is.
We would have to implement it.
Yeah, we'd have to implement it, and because we don't do our own zoning.
How do we enforce it?
Yeah, but I think it's doable. All right, I won't interfere anymore.
Just come back to us with a request.
And anyone else? Questions, comments on this? All right, and I believe that, I don't know if the team has moved it. Does anyone, any member of the public would like to comment on this resolution? All right, seeing none, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. The next item on the agenda is the first reading ordinance authorizing a pilot payment for 8508 and 8510 Flower Avenue.
This is a 21-unit property located 8508, 8510 Flower Avenue, and Montgomery County has requested a pilot for the program. Last week, there were a couple of questions regarding any displacement of tenants, and David Wilson is here this evening, development manager for Montgomery Housing Partnership, and also submitted a letter, which you have in your packet, which addresses those questions that you had last week. He has affirmed that there will not be any displacement of any of the tenants from the property, even if they have incomes that are over the income requirements for the building. Additionally, there was a question regarding rent increases following the renovation of the building. And although they don't have specific information regarding the cost of the renovation right now, they have promised, MHP always promises that they will keep rent increases to a minimum. So if you have any other questions, he is here to answer.
Okay, I appreciate the information. I had asked the question about the commitment that Montgomery Housing Partnership was making in terms of affordability of these units, and I see that you do, in fact, have that information here, and so I appreciate that. Are there other questions, comments from the council? Yes, come in.
I'm always happy to see deals put together that have a combination of subsidies, and that's one of the things that I've talked about before in terms of Tacoma Park's affordable housing mechanisms. And it's good to see, there's only two units with a deep subsidy, but it's good to see units that have a deep subsidy. And it's also good to see units in the same building leased as market rate units as well because then you don't, that building doesn't become, you know, the building that is, you know, all subsidized units. So it's good to have a, it's good to have a good mix, and I'm happy to see that. Who's the owner of this building?
What's the city area of Montgomery Housing Partnership?
Right now?
Well.
That's not the people who are involved in the lawsuit, though, right?
As of a couple of weeks ago.
You own it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I would just, I would encourage you to do deals that have deep subsidy units, and it's one of the hardest things to do, and it's great to see that you're able to do it in this contract, so I'm happy.
It's part of our mission.
That's great.
Ruben?
Yes, I also want to offer my support for this. This has been a particularly difficult unit. There've been a lot of complaints about it. It's had a kind of troubled history. It's nice to see it turning over. I would like to move the.
Second. Okay, the ordinance has been moved and seconded. Terry?
I had a question. Your letter addressed the displacement of existing tenants whose incomes are above the restrictions. What about the tenants whose incomes are below the restriction?
We're not in the, we're not in the business of displacing people. Our mission is to try to provide affordable housing, and as long as people are paying their rent, they will not be displaced. Thank you.
And I believe it was mentioned the last time we discussed this, that during the time that the building's being renovated, the tenants are going to be moved to another location, is that what it is? And then they'll be returned when the building's, the renovation is completed.
That's right.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the council? Are there any public comments on this ordinance at first reading? Since it's the first reading of the ordinance, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes at first reading, and thank you very much for coming and bringing us that information. It was very helpful.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a single-reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for a survey of city residents. And you might start, Bob, by reiterating as you did last time. We've talked about this, why this is coming before the council again.
Yes, I mean, last week, the council had its initial discussion concerning a draft of a survey of city residents. As I mentioned at the, almost towards the end of that discussion, the city attorney's office has recommended that the city council reaffirm the contract award to National Research Center. The council's original authorization obviously took place several years ago, which is somewhat unusual. During the intervening time, there's obviously been some increases in postage, mailing costs, things of that nature. And the city attorney's office just thought it would be cleaner, if you will, for me to bring this back to the council and actually have you essentially reaffirm the contract award. I did want to just take a few moments and just share with you, I guess, my thoughts in terms of the not-to-exceed cost that's included in the ordinance that is before you this evening. Looking at the longest survey option, which was seven pages, and the pricing we received from the National Research Center, that has an associated cost of just over $34,000. Obviously, there were a lot of concerns expressed by the council that maybe the survey was too long, and certainly as we refine that draft and bring it back to you, that's something that staff will be working with the company on. But there were a lot of kind of open questions at this point. The council had some interest in asking some questions about the proposed construction of a gym. Since last week's meeting, Benita George, the management assistant in my office, who is the staff liaison to the Health Services Impact Committee, has had some conversations with the co-chairs of that committee. They may have some interest in, rather than going their own route on a survey, have expressed some interest in maybe including some questions in this survey about the relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital. So the price that I've included in the ordinance is a not-to-exceed cost of $37,000. What I took into account was the current cost for a seven-page survey, which already includes two open-ended questions, and basically built in some additional flexibility to possibly ask some other open-ended questions beyond the two already included in the price. Certainly, before we would move forward with anything, the survey draft would be coming back before the council, and I'd be able to provide you with a more refined price at that time, once I have a better sense of what questions are actually going to be in the survey document.
I wonder if I could, I appreciate the additional information you've provided us on response rates. I still think that their sense of things is a bit optimistic. Basically, they're oversampling at a ratio of five to three for essentially renter-occupied households, and that still could provide an inadequate number of renter-occupied households. Is there any flexibility in the contract for them to do additional follow-up if they get a very low response rate from those households?
Certainly. I think this was the, and what the mayor is referring to, just to make sure everyone's aware of it, there was an email that I think each of the council members received over the weekend from a city resident who had some questions and some concerns about essentially the accuracy or the margin of error, if you will, in terms of who we are surveying. As I recall, that particular individual's question had to do with not having enough data regarding specific ethnic populations or ward, and I guess, as the mayor was just alluding to, I did pass out some additional information this evening. There's an orange sheet at each of your places. As this notes, the goal of the survey was really not to target specific ethnic populations or ward. Obviously, we were going to mark the surveys, if you will, by ward, but that is a smaller portion of those being surveyed, so it's not going to have the same. But that is a smaller portion of those being surveyed, so it's not going to have the same level of confidence or accuracy, if you will. So I just wanted to call everyone's attention to that additional information. And in specific response to the mayor's question, that's certainly something we can talk to the survey company about. Obviously, there'll be, you know, we're working on the contract term since some time has passed. And if that is an interest of the council to basically provide for some additional follow-up beyond that, that was originally contemplated, that's certainly something we could, you know, put into the contract language.
I certainly understand that they wouldn't want to assure us that they're going to be able to get data down to an ethnic group level if it's a small ethnic group. But renter households are fifty-five percent of the city's household.
Right, I think that is a different issue.
And so there really does need, if we're going to say that this is representative of our, of our community, it needs to have adequate representation from renter households.
I, I agree. Obviously, one of the things that we can certainly discuss with them is whether or not what was originally proposed is sufficient. The overall goal is to obviously have something that represents the demographics of the community. And without sufficient responses from renters, I don't think we'll have an accurate picture on the various questions that we're asking. I think there were a number of suggestions from various council members, I think including Councilmember Siemens, who obviously has a large number of renters in his ward. Whether there's any kind of personal follow-up we can do, obviously, as I mentioned last week, there, there may be some issues regarding, you know, privacy and people's comfort levels. But I think all those suggestions are, are very worth exploring, and we can certainly talk to National Research Center about that.
Barb, I wonder if, thinking about groups that, you know, renters and homeowners are two large groups in the city. I know in Ward Four that new immigrants, first-generation immigrants is a large percentage of the population within Ward Four. And I wonder if grouping at that level would make any sense.
I'm not a survey expert, Councilmember Siemens, so I'll take my best shot at it. When we send the surveys out, obviously, we have a, a good idea from the city's database of who are renters and who are homeowners, because we personally track that information, and we're actually providing the information to National Research Center. Off the top of my head, the only thing that I can think of to, to get at that issue and to see if there's perhaps any trends that emerge is perhaps to have a, some type of question on the survey, you know, how long has someone been, you know, a, a resident of the United States, or something to that effect. We wouldn't have it in our database, but we could certainly explore, including a question on the survey, if you think that might be helpful and glean some useful information from that.
Yeah, we don't need to get to that level tonight.
Okay.
And the other question I had regarding the contract itself is you were proposing thirty-seven thousand dollars, not to exceed thirty-seven thousand dollars. And you itemized some things that includes, but I didn't notice that you talked about Spanish language, but did this include the Spanish language version?
Yes, I can break that down a little bit. The, the pricing that we receive from the National Research Center, obviously, there's going to be some instrument design, some sampling, mailing cost, data analysis, and certainly some presentation costs for them to actually come, you know, present the results. The full survey will be translated into Spanish and mailed, just as we customarily do with the, you know, things on the bond issue, the gym, things of that nature. On the cover letter, there will actually be a reference, a paragraph, if you will, in two additional languages, French and Amharic, since that represents a lot of, you know, it's a language spoken by many of the residents in Tacoma Park. What the paragraph will essentially state is that, you know, if, if either French or Amharic is their native language, and they need some assistance in completing the survey, to please contact, and we'll have a contact point, and we'll make arrangements to have someone assist individuals who are more comfortable with that language fill out the survey. Obviously, there's multiple languages spoken in Tacoma Park. I think at one time, someone quoted a statistic that there's maybe over a hundred different languages spoken in the city limits. And obviously, there's a, you know, a range at which we can't address everything. But in talking to the staff, we tried to identify those languages that we had reason to believe were the most commonly spoken in the city.
Thank you. I would hope that those notices and offers of assistance would be in the native language and would be prominently displayed, so people didn't just overlook them.
It will be. That's certainly the intent. Thank you for that.
Is there going to be any telephone follow-up on these?
As envisioned currently, it is just done by mail. We don't necessarily have in our database phone numbers for each of these individuals. Obviously, a lot of folks actually rely on cell phones as their primary mode of telephone contact, and those numbers wouldn't be published in the phone book or anything else.
Do we have current numbers on renter-occupied units? And the mayor quoted fifty-five percent, which is, I think, is from the 2000 census. But we have some significant shift in the renter versus homeowner populations.
We, on a fairly routine basis, particularly when we're getting ready to do large mailings, go through that database. Obviously, we have a database of rental facilities that are licensed by the city, or is rental facility.
Those probably undercount our actual rental facility, so.
Yeah. The last time we sort of went through and cleaned that up was before the mailing for the gym, so I think it's reasonably accurate.
Okay. When I was on the TASCI committee, a lot of people thought that the result of this survey was that we were going to be able to determine how city residents felt about the value of the services vis-à-vis the taxes that they pay for them, or the, you know, the cost to the city, even if they're not directly paying taxes for them. I think there's a lot of great information to come out of this survey, and we'll learn a lot about how people feel about the, the different services that we provide. But other than question fifteen, where it says I receive a good value for the city taxes I pay, in general, for all the city taxes, we don't really get an impression of how people feel regarding, you know, particular departments, even at the, even at the sort of fifty-thousand-foot level, which is, you know, how do you feel about the library? And the other thing, I think, is it's, it's, part of that is it's hard to do that, because you need to know that the library costs eight-hundred thousand dollars a year, and you get a ninety-seven thousand dollars, or a hundred-and-thirteen dollars, something like that, versus, you know, Public Works, where it's almost entirely paid for by rebates. So I think it's, this is different than what the TASCI committee envisioned, this being in, and since it came out of the council. To begin with, I would say it's probably just they didn't understand what the survey was going to be, or maybe it's changed, I don't know.
If I may, because obviously, Councilmember Clay and I spent many an hours, she is a member of the TASCI committee and myself as a liaison. I, I think Councilmember Clay is correct that when the TASCI group started its work, there was certainly some sense that the survey might provide an opportunity to get some insight into how residents felt about various city services. My recollection, Councilmember Clay can correct me if it's wrong, is that when the committee gave its final report, there was at least sort of a question mark in the committee's mind as to whether or not a survey such as this is really the best way to get at that information because of the very complexity that you're raising. And they had actually suggested that perhaps focus groups or some other feedback mechanism might be a better way at getting at these issues, because if you don't truly understand the impact on your own financial circumstances, I'm not sure whether the information that we'd be getting back, how much it would assist the council in making some decisions. I, I think certainly you're raising a very valid point, and we may want to have some further discussions with the survey company and just with the council amongst yourselves to see if you want to explore some other feedback mechanisms.
Well, I think one thing that is present is that they, these, most of these questions, the initial questions, they use in other communities. So we'll be able to compare ourselves to other communities all across the country, and that'll be helpful. The other thing I want to say is that one of the things I find most detestable is ballot box budgeting and ballot box zoning. And to some extent, the questions on the gymnasium, to me, kind of read that way. I don't really like them.
Well, we, we, no, no one, no one else did either.
Oh, okay, great.
We made some-
You are the company.
Some substantial suggestions for changes, and I believe that the city manager is working on those now.
Okay, great. And, and I, in, in the same vein, I want to say that I can't imagine a set of questions about the Washington Adventist Hospital relocation that I would support in a survey format, because I really feel like a more interactive forum, like a planning charrette, is the way to go with that. And I, I wouldn't want to see us use the survey for that. And in, in part, I don't want the survey to be too long, because then people won't answer it. And I think that since the, kind of, the return on the investment there, I think is not going to be that functional for us, we'll just dump those off and let the, let it go as it is. And I'm sorry I wasn't here last week to make those comments.
No, and I apologize, Councilmember Clay, I probably was not clear. I think the, the intent, and I have not spoken to the co-chairs, and I'm sure they would probably have some suggestions, but what they're trying to get out of any survey that they do, it wasn't really about what should happen with the, the property itself. It was really more geared towards getting some insight from residents about their healthcare needs was the focus, not the actual planning or land use issues associated with the site. And I think your council colleagues, in your absence last week, made it perfectly clear that they shared your concern about the length of the survey, so we're sensitive to that.
Anyone else? Any other council concerns? All right, there is before the council a single reading ordinance. Does someone want to move the ordinance?
Move it.
It's removed twice and seconded twice. But that will do it.
And it's up to the clerk to decide who.
That's right. All right, are there any additional council comments or questions? Are there any public comments? All right, seeing none. This is a single reading ordinance, and so will the clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Offinley.
Aye.
Councilmember Berry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance, the single reading ordinance passes, and the city manager is authorized to essentially redo the contract with current figures in it. The council, we're running a bit, actually, not as bad as I thought we were going to do. We're running a bit behind schedule, but we will take a short break and come back for our work session items. Lee and councilmember Barry have some additional information that they'd like to bring to the council. Alana?
Good evening again. I represent the S H A plans for traffic and pedestrian safety, including with the crossroads. The council has seen these plans several times before and has passed at least one resolution regarding the project is related to pedestrian safety and resurfacing on University Boulevard near the Lineway Crossroads area, Tacoma, excuse me, Tacoma Lineway Crossroads area, as well as on New Hampshire Avenue. And the section that this council item addresses tonight is the area close, and I'll just for convenience, I'm going to call it close to the Rite Aid across from the Safeway Shopping Center. I think we're all clear where that is. And currently, there's a crosswalk at that location. And when the, currently, the way the state highway plans, the way they show it, there will continue to be a crosswalk at that location in the future. Recently, this item was brought up at a meeting that was held at the Tacoma Lineway Crossroads Development Authority. And a request was made to state highway to include a fence at this location because it's approximately 300 feet of area, of which about 224 feet would include a fence, given site distance requirements and so forth. And the request made by the C E A and Rite Aid was to install a fence at that location. At that time, the state highway said that they would not install a fence at that location, but would entertain, well, there was a discussion about it. At the moment, they are looking at the possibility and evaluating the possibility of including a fence at that location. They have concerns because in the ongoing negotiations with the property owner, which the Rite Aid is on, and also the Taco Bell, which is the future site of the transit station, the location of an intersection right where that fence would go is still on the table. And if a, if a intersection was located at that location, then the, then the fence would need to be taken out and the intersection put into that location. Their construction schedule is still quite long, so they don't need to make a decision about the fence until the spring of 2008. I'm sorry, the fence would not be installed until 2008, and so they probably do not need to make a decision until the upcoming winter, so next winter. And at the moment, they've just initiated negotiations for the purchase of the property. They've completed their assessment phase and are in the process of negotiations, but they're at the beginning of the negotiation process. So they don't know, no way for the outcome of the negotiations in order to make that decision. Staff did participate in this discussion at the time, recommended that landscaping be considered for this intersection because it's a lower cost, not, actually, retry. Staff recommended landscaping for this location because it's quite a wide median. There is a need for beautification in this whole area, and because state highway would ever pay landscaping at this location because it would survive, given the width of the median. We don't feel that pedestrian traffic at this location is any heavier than in Silver Spring, where there is a considerable buildup of landscaping, very different from anything that state highway has provided in Tacoma Park on our mediums. And we would like to see something like that at this location.
Well, I certainly would like to make a comment, but I, perhaps you could do it first to get the facts on this.
Thank you, mayor and council. There's one thing that I enjoy working with Elana. Did I say her right this time?
Yes.
I have a dear friend named Lona, and this is Elana. It's her fault. I really enjoy working with people whose minds are sharp, and we might not agree, but we disagree agreeably. That's the pleasure of working with you, and I like that.
Thank you.
One of the awkward things that we face in this construction is that it's gone backwards from what it was originally supposed to have been. The transit center was supposed to have been done first. That's what's creating part of the problem. In this whole plan that we've been working on for over five years, it was always conceived that there would be a significant median fence from Lebanon Street to 14th on University and from Merrimack to Holton Lane on New Hampshire. That was just a thing in our vision. That was because we hadn't sensed the plan to make a left turn into the Rite Aid property when and if the transit center is done. It was only a few weeks ago during the construction process that I happened to go over to take some pictures for a specific presentation that Mary Kendall and I made for Maryland State Highway Administration, that I realized that there was something strange about this middle island of University Boulevard from the Signal to Lebanon. It was extremely wide and it was empty in the middle, void of the support structure for the fence. And I got ahold of Dick Dunkel, who's in Montgomery County, the bus coordinator, because of another problem at that particular site by the Rite Aid while they were working. And he came down, and all of a sudden, several things stood out, you know, to our embarrassment that we hadn't seen these before. The current island is built to accommodate, the fence should have been installed, but it's not being built to accommodate a left turn into Rite Aid, if you will. I'm sorry, it sounds a little confusing. If you're going east on University Boulevard and you cross from Lebanon, and you want to get into Rite Aid, right now you can't. You have to go down to the Signal. Ultimately, that signal is going to be for buses only, if the transit center is built as is currently conceived. Therefore, in order to accommodate the property owner, there's plans, which I have on the wall of my boardroom, show a left turn into Rite Aid to accommodate people wanting to go into the shopping center. So there's your conundrum. For an indefinite period of time, this median fence, which is being installed for one reason only, to redirect pedestrians against their own foolishness, to keep them from being killed or hurt, is not going to exist for some 300 feet from the current place where it will exist, where it's less needed. And the irony of it is that if you can conceive of the location of Lebanon Street and the apartment houses in Prince George's County, there's this huge residential complex of pedestrians who come down to either go to Safeway or to go down to get on the buses, who swarm across the center of University Boulevard. And you have the Montgomery County buses going east on University, turning left on Lebanon, discharging whole busloads of people at the back of the Rite Aid. Therefore, they've got to go someplace. And you have people who are running across University Boulevard to get on the bus that they can't get on on Lebanon because now the pickup point is in front of Rite Aid. We've got about a backward six, if you will, on this whole thing. So it is one of the most severely challenged pedestrian crossing areas, and people just have the same bent that I do, the shortest distance between two lines, two points is a straight line. And everybody jaywalks, it's just an understood thing. Who wants to walk a quarter of a mile to a signal, to a cross street, walk back down again? We just don't do that. But because of the type of cultural that many of our immigrant friends come from, I cannot conceive of why they don't understand how dangerous it is to step out in front of a car. And as you know, we have identified nine people dying in the proximity of the crossroads in the last six years. All Hispanic, all stepping out in front of a car, none in a marked crosswalk. Consequently, when this showed the lack of a fence, it raised a serious red flag in our minds as to the wisdom of that for even an interim period of time. I'm totally in favor of the point that Elana is making about landscaping. Very few people could fault me with that. I have plenty of that in my own home, planters all over the place. But landscaping doesn't stop people who are determined to cross the street. My best illustration is the Prince George's Mall on East West Highway. For years, there were large bushes in the middle of that Boulevard, that six-lane highway, which are the six-lane highways. But people would continuously cross over and ignore the overpass to get to the metro and pop out in front of a driver and scare him half out of their wits because that was the shortest distance to get to the metro. Well, someone in their, finally in their wisdom, sometimes takes a long time to get smart, put up an eight-foot fence. Guess what? Everybody finds it convenient to use the crossover now. Nobody finds it because you can't go across the street. Therefore, you're not inhibiting traffic. That's my concern about the lack of some kind of a mechanical device, even if it's temporary, something to keep people from getting across from Lebanon Street to join up with the fence that's going to go in, even though it's only in 2008, so it's sometime down the road. So for the time being, there will have to be landscaping of some sort, in any case, because of the width of that median. But it's the only place in all four corners where there's going to be landscaping. The rest of it's solid cement with a capping of stamped cement, look brick-like and reddish-colored. So as you look up to the So as you look up to where the median support is for the fence to be on top of it, there's a slope 22-degree angle for runoff, for water, that'll be stamped brick-like cement such as we have in the intersection now. So that's one area of concern about a fence need. The second one that's not being certainly certain to be reinstalled is the fence in front of 7676 New Hampshire Avenue, where we're proposing the farmer's market go on the Furnish Road. The State Highway Administration, again, in some theoretician's desk someplace, decided they're going to take that fence off and not reinstall it. Well, all you have to do is go to the front of La Union and see what happens in terms of landscaping when people choose to go up and down a bank. As a matter of fact, the entire intersection at the crossroads where the sign is says "Welcome to Tacoma Park," by the way, installed by the CDA—just thought I'd throw that in there. That used to be eroded as bad as the La Union one until the city and the CDA, out of CD funds, put in the fence up on top. The fence stopped people from trying to crawl—I watched women push strollers up that thing with the help of another person, just because it was easier. So that fence works. The fence around the former Toys R Us complex—no longer Toys R Us, as you know—works beautifully because people now have no have to walk to the end of the fence to get across the street. So there are two fences that concern us significantly, for the sake of pedestrians, certainly not for looks, aesthetics. Landscaping would be far more beautiful, and I wish it would be hindrance unless you put in acotillo bushes. If you've been to Mexico, they work. And people plant them right this far apart, and with the thorns sticking out this way, you don't go through them. But if some kind of landscaping will deter the people who are determined, bless you. I'm totally in favor of it. But in the meantime, that's the reason for $15 million being expended at the intersection to get not only the pedestrian safety aspects, but the Transit Center installed to accommodate fewer people crossing at the wrong places. So I think I've sort of summarized it up, Councilman Berry.
Just a brief comment. And this is, by way, providing a little bit of historical context to what you both have said. I think that the efforts of all concerned have been extremely valuable. I think the S.H.A. has done a great job with the planning. I think we've done a great job in encouraging everyone to do the right thing. CDA has done a great job. The counties, both Prince George's County and Montgomery County governments have done a good job. Montgomery Transit has done a good job. And I think that as a result of all of these efforts, both the educational part and the installation of the mechanical devices part, there's no doubt in my mind that lives have been saved over the last several years. Still, it's a dangerous place. I can recall a lot of thought being given to fences. People looked at the fences and they figured out the height. They assumed that women would try to—with their children—would try to lift the baby carriages over the fence or get them through the bars, so they had to be constructed in a certain way where that wouldn't happen. And I think it was just maybe an oversight or some miscommunication that led us to understand that the fence would extend down to Lebanon Street because we know that area is particularly dangerous. We did read in the paper over the weekend about the sobriety efforts and the patrols. It was a very interesting piece, and if you were quoted in it, in the Washington Post over the weekend. The reporter had gone out with the patrol. And the so-called beach, which is the area behind the—on New Hampshire, on the east side, behind the little strip mall there, so-called the beach because people go there to drink. And as a result of that and just the tendency for people to flock across these intersections, it remains a very dangerous place. And I'm very concerned about the time that all of this is going to take. I know budget cycles and planning cycles, but 2008 is a long way away in the time of that area there. And I'd certainly like to see the fence constructed before then, if it were all possible. Maybe it can't be. This, to me, is a concern because someone could die there tonight as a result of the lack of a barrier there. So I'm highly in favor of the fence. I'd like to see the fence extended. I'd like to bring to bear what pressure we can bring to expedite the construction, if at all possible. I too—I mean, particularly if it's a budget issue, and I think the meeting the other day, we got the sense that it was, there was a certain amount of money that was put aside for this, and when it was expended, they'd have to go back and get more. You know, what is a human life worth? Certainly more than 300 feet of fencing. The other issue is the assumption that the extension of the fence would somehow be interrupted when the negotiations for the acquisition of the land for the Transit Center is completed. I don't—while I'm heartened to hear that negotiation's underway, this is not something that's going to happen quickly. It's going to take a good bit of time, and therefore, if we were to support the extension of the fence, even if the Transit Center did arrive eventually, it's going to take a considerable amount of time. And again, even if the part of the fence has to be removed in favor of intersection or something else, traffic signals and so forth, still, it would be money well spent for the safety of the public in that area. Yes, if there's some kind of landscaping that could—and public education, of which there has already been quite a bit, and I think that's responsible in part for seeing the fatalities decrease, that might be the solution. But I think probably a resolution that would be so worded in a way that would strongly advocate the continuation of the fencing, but would be open—the city would be open to listening to plans from S.H.A. for landscaping that would be a reasonable substitute for the fencing itself. And I would encourage my colleagues in the discussion that we will now continue to keep that in mind as we go forward.
So your suggestion would be to advocate for the fence, but to do it in such a way that if they can come up with something which is an actual barrier, not with the assumption that any landscaping would be a barrier, that that would be the primary thing, is that it, in fact, be a barrier to pedestrians?
Correct. And thank them, you know, very, very sincerely for all the work that they have done so far and that they will continue to do. This is no one's fault. No one should be blamed for an oversight. They ought to be commended. And to do the right thing would be to find a way, a barrier of some kind, to prevent people from flooding across that intersection and some of them probably being killed.
But Councilmember Berry is talking about—it brings to mind the suggestion that was made. Because of the cost of establishing a cement median which will exist and is mostly done on University Boulevard elsewhere, that would not have to be constructed in the current area where landscaping could also be accommodated. They could have a simple curb, six inches wide, six inches high, if you will, simply a place to bolt this fence on until such time as the Transit Center required, a left-turn lane in front of Rite Aid. That would still allow landscaping to be put alongside both sides of this median fence. So there wouldn't be a huge cost as it would be if you had to go to a six-foot wide as they are elsewhere. This is simply a support structure for fence to be bolted on. A point about the fence, too, is the State Highway Administration accommodated our request not to go to an eight-foot-high fence. That's a Guantanamo style. And we requested that it be no more than six feet, and they're accommodating us on that, although it is going to be six feet to the top of the fence because of the raised median barrier, so there'll be a four-foot fence on top of that. We originally hoped it wouldn't have to be that high, but it does to have the adequate support structure and to protect the fence from cars hitting, potentially damaging the fence. So if you would be kind enough to include not only that fence, but also that fence in front of 7676. It's proposed that there be a—and Elana would be better equipped to suggest what the landscaping is going to be like, since there's going to be a bank reinstalled as opposed to that retaining wall, which we had hoped wouldn't happen, that we'd lose the retaining wall. The S.H.A. didn't want to put that fence back up, and we're saying that fence has to go back up again to keep people directed to the right way rather than strolling down through landscaping to cause erosion and potentially fall down the hill. So there are two areas of fencing that are subject to some qualification. Also, there's a stairwell that's being discussed to allow people to shortcut from New Hampshire Avenue sidewalk down to the Furnish Road in front of 7676.
I have a question. Maybe Elana would be the appropriate person to direct this to. The cost issue, is the cost issue because of the type of fencing that they're doing?
I think that it would be a large expense to then rip out later. It's very different from putting in—it's—fencing is much more expensive than, say, sidewalk or other types of infrastructure improvements. And so installing a fence at that length and then taking it out, because you have to not only take out the section where the intersection is, but also the site distances around the intersection. So it would be a substantial difference, other than the amount of fence that is left on either side. I'm not sure how effective that would be. So that in terms of efficiency, and because they're not actually installing anything until the spring of 2008, they want to defer the decision until they know more about the outcome of the negotiations.
I am knowing a little bit about this, not as much as the rest of you are. I am inclined to agree with Doug that things may very well happen more slowly than people currently anticipate. And I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is there a possibility for a temporary solution? Is there some kind of a inexpensive temporary fence that could be put in and that would be effective at redirecting pedestrians and—but wouldn't be either that much—either that expensive to put in or if it needed to be taken out later, with the notion that at the point at which there's a final decision made, there could be something more permanent put in there? Is that feasible as a solution, or are there reasons that that wouldn't work?
The irony of it is, Mayor Porter, that no fence of any kind is going to go in, as Elana said, until 2008. No fence.
Right. Yeah.
So, yes, we wish they were fencing tomorrow, but there's no plan to install any kind of a fence until sometime 2008. So we're going to have to cross our fingers and do a little praying to whomever to say —in the meantime, as Councilmember Berry said, let's hope nobody else gets hurt or killed while we're waiting for this postponement, because they find it necessary to finish everything, and the fence is the very last thing to go in.
Right. It seems that they're using big orange barrels for sort of the same purpose at the moment, but those don't—those aren't nearly the same.
No, no, no.
I mean, I would agree with the points that Councilmember Berry made, but if—I mean, I also understand, and that you made, Erwin also, but I also understand Elana's point about them being sort of reluctant to spend a great deal of money installing a fence, then to spend a great deal of money potentially taking it down. And I'm wondering if there's a way to sort of get around that, and perhaps that might be a way to facilitate them doing it more quickly anyway. Is that a possibility? I don't know. I'm looking at Elana because you seem to have a better sense of what State Highway might be thinking.
I'm sure that they have a—generally, they would have a logical construction schedule. And having had projects that we were cooperating with them in the past, they actually were further behind schedule. I'm not sure how much—at now—I'm not sure how much control they have over the schedule and speeding up the schedule with their contractor. So, I mean, obviously, given money, they might have more control, but in my experience, I'm not sure how feasible that is. But I think that State Highway would be the appropriate entity to ask that question.
Certainly, we could increase the number of efforts that the city and the county make, or counties make, to try to leaflet the area, remind people who use it more frequently about the dangers of crossing in the street and not with the—not in the intersection and with the lights. We've done that a few times, but certainly, we could probably, working with our partners, Casa and Representative—or, sorry, Councilman—
Will Campus.
Will Campus. It went in and went out again. He's been great, especially designing things with—for non-literate members of the community. And that I would highly recommend, that we beef up our public education efforts in the area. It's not the magic wand, but it could be helpful in the short term while we continue to work with the S.H.A. folks and your connections there, Elana, to see if we can work out a temporary solution, if we can get the construction schedule advanced, and if we can persuade them that the money, no matter, you know, how much is it? I mean, we don't really know. No one's proffered a number for us to look at, to be shocked by, or not, and it might be helpful to know what they're thinking about in terms of the cost.
I would say I totally agree with what Doug had to say about, you know, the value of nine lives and the probability that's going to happen. Since I've been here, I know that there was a kid that was hit in the, you know, in the median intersection. I have two suggestions to add to the list of possibilities. While I would say the fence would be the first priority, and the fence that was tall enough that people couldn't climb over, if it was absolutely impossible to do that, maybe something that was just the height of the Jersey barriers or something like that, that would at least keep strollers from being able to go across and might encourage, you know, parents with really little kids to go to the intersection. It would be secondary, but it would be something. And the other thing is that in California, in the area close—basically between San Diego and in Orange County, along the highway there, they had lots of problems with people being hit, families being hit, people coming across the freeway to avoid checkpoints. And they put up yellow signs that had sadly a picture of a family and running across the highway, dragging a kid along. But the point was to alert the drivers that there are sometimes people running across the highway. And you don't want to give the message to people that, like, "Look, they put a sign up for us, and so it's okay for us to do this." But it might be something to consider is to educate and alert the drivers so that they're looking around. I almost killed two people at that Prince George's Mall that ran through the bushes and in front of my car, and I had to swerve first to the right and then back to the left so that the rear end of my car didn't take them out as it swung around. And so, you know, I know that the bushes aren't really helpful. In some ways, they made it worse because if I could have seen them coming across the street, I would have stopped, but they literally jumped in front of my car while I was going 40 miles an hour.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. You know, obviously, the problem is real. It's demonstrated it's real, and we have to do something to try to minimize future occurrences of pedestrians being struck out there. I think all the suggestions I've heard tonight are good, but one that you made, Mr. Mack, in jest, I think was real. It's something that the city used in the past when we did some crime control through environmental design, and that is the use of those sticker bushes with very long thorns. And I think you said it in jest earlier, but we have used those in the past. They are very effective. They're kind of a low bush, but they have very large thorns. They thrive in Tacoma Park, and they did keep people—maybe not everybody—from cutting through places, but they were an effective deterrent for many people. And I would suggest we look at that.
For Councilmember Clay's point on that sign, I know the signs you're talking about used to live in California. But it's S.H.A. in its concern, recognizing that we have a serious problem with pedestrians, has already— a serious problem with pedestrians, has already installed four overhead yellow blinking lights warning drivers that heavy pedestrians coming up, as you come to all four corners to the crossroads.
Really?
Oh, yes. Two on University Boulevard, east and west, and north and south on New Hampshire Avenue. They're bleeped twenty-four hours a day.
It says, heavy, I forget what the sign says, but it says something like pedestrian density area ahead or something like that.
Warning about pedestrians, yes. We're going to be faced with challenges no matter what. When you have more than eighty-five thousand vehicles a day going through that intersection, it's going to be a challenge no matter what you do. And worse yet, when that University Boulevard section that we're talking about, if in fact it does become a left-turn lane, it's going to be chopped up so badly that to some degree the fence is going to lose its effectiveness because of the number of crossings and left-turn lane openings that would have to be put in anyway to accommodate traffic. So we're kind of caught on the horns of a dilemma no matter what we do.
Are there other comments? It seems to me that the council shares the concerns about that area and maybe Alana could, working with Councilmember Barry, could put together a resolution to put before the council, you know, expressing the concern and trying to get something done, you know, whatever is the most effective way to get, to redirect pedestrians so that they're not right in front of the traffic. Whatever can be done most expeditiously and soonest would be a good thing to do. Is the council amenable to that sort of thing?
Yes.
I'm seeing most people saying yes, so I will try and put that on an agenda coming up fairly soon. Well, thank you both, we appreciate it. And thank you, Doug, for bringing this to our attention. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of neighborhood traffic coming study consultants. Now, we're not talking about the studies at this point, we're talking about the consultants that the city would hire to enable us to do that.
I'm going to present, we issued a bid for, I'm sorry, we issued a request for proposals and had a lot of interest and we received four proposals of which we would consider two to be responsive. And we intend to interview both of those firms this week. When we went through the proposals and we read through them, each proposal was offering different, a different set of services and also came in at a different cost range. And one proposal, we think, probably did some very good research on the website and developed a clear idea of how much funding was available for this project and came in with a proposal that was right at the amount of money that was available, but we feel that while the firms seemed extremely experienced and very knowledgeable about this type of project, their studies, the studies that they proposed to do, we weren't sure would be adequate. And so, and that was one of the firms that we found to be the most responsive. The other firm that came in, the costs that they proposed were more than twice the amount that's available for this project. So when we looked at each of these sets of proposals, we felt that there were issues with both of them that would need to be worked out and that there was a strong possibility that the council might wish to have a better job done, but less than the original four that were proposed. And so one of the things that I would like from the council tonight is a discussion of whether it's better to have four sets of suggestions based on lower amounts of counting of, and I'll go through all of the different types of counts that have been proposed for this study as well, or whether it's better to have four different studies. And one of the things that also came out of this request for proposals and also from the set of issues that the neighborhoods brought to the city was that we forwarded a whole list of concerns to State Highway. And State Highway has come back and said that they would be interested in doing a joint study with the city of pedestrian access throughout the city. So that would include state highways as well as city roads. And as part of that process, there would then be follow-up in construction and there would be a construction commitment on the part of State Highway as well as a construction commitment on the part of the city. They just came and discussed that with Steph, but they haven't actually made a proposal, they do not have a consultant yet, that they're proposing nor a cost. So that's just something that is currently a possibility that is known of that. When we looked at the proposals, what has been proposed is generally a destination origins survey, which is looking at licenses and determining whether or not the licenses that come into the neighborhood are immediately exiting the neighborhood or whether they're staying in the neighborhood. So whether or not it's cut through traffic, doing counts of volume of traffic, and doing studies of turns at different intersections as well as pedestrian activity at different intersections, so which way traffic is going once it enters the neighborhood, and also looking at speed. There's so many different counts involved in these projects and many of these teams are promoting, have offered to use what are called tubes, which actually can measure both volume and speed because they measure the passage of a car between two tubes so they can calculate how fast the car is going as well as the number of cars that are actually traveling on any given roadway, as well as very coordinated counts where they'll have eleven different people at all of the intersections that are doing specific counts at a specific They're also using video and so some of the counts may be done by video as opposed to people actually counting. And no one provided a bid option for having the neighborhood do counts as opposed to the firm. So, and so while the bid that included all of the neighborhoods, the firms seem very capable and responsive to the request, the process that they're proposing, we're not secure that it will actually solve the problem because one of the counts that they're doing, they're only proposing to do two hours at one peak time, so it'd be either morning or evening and not, what we would consider adequate would be at two peak times minimum or possibly even three if you would include the weekend. So, so we would see, and we haven't actually interviewed the firms, so we don't know which, we haven't met and asked specific questions to the firms, but one possibility would be to do, to use some of the money that would be for one of the, one of the proposed study areas and use that funding to make sure that the other study areas were adequately studied. Does that make sense? Was that clear? And then, the other responsive firm provided extensive community interaction and meetings, which may not be necessary within the scope of the project, so there may be ways to work with them to have them study two to three neighborhoods, although their price was significantly higher than the other proposal. But we felt that it would be more beneficial to the city to interview at least two firms.
I'm surprised that they didn't take you up on the alternative to use volunteer labor that may be, I mean, it's certainly more difficult for them to train people than it is to just use people that are already trained. Might that be an area you could press them on?
We could certainly ask them during the interview process.
Can you tell me the names of the four firms that responded?
Grove Slade, which was partnering with J J R, V H B, I'm going to, Wallace M. H., I think, but I'm not sure what all of the initials stand for, and Greenhorn, Omara.
Greenhorn and Omara, yeah. It seems to me that extensive, either extensive kind of community engagement and interaction and then also doing a whole traffic count is overkill. And a lot of people will tell you that they have a very strong perception and understanding of what's happening, but I guess in this case, I would go with the data collection, especially if they're going to be able to tell how long people are staying in the neighborhoods. It's going to be more accurate. Unfortunately, it's only going to collect, you know, a couple of points in time. So it seems like you'd have to do enough interacting with the community to figure out what the points in time were that you wanted to collect, but, and I think that would be important, but beyond that, you know, I don't think it's, it's the same kind of a community engagement process just for trying to figure out what's happening. Maybe for phenomenon you can't explain by the data collection process, that would be okay, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend a lot of money on that. And the other thing is that the areas where we have traffic issues, some of those areas, I think, are limited in the number of solutions that you could propose. They're, to me, they're, you know, they're somewhat obvious. And so then that kind of begs the question of, do they, do we need to apply the same treatment to every traffic study area? You know, some areas are incredibly complex about how the traffic moves back and forth through them. I think the whole end of Ward Three that goes from Woodland down to New Hampshire has a number of different sources of cut-through traffic, or I would argue, and a lot of different potential solutions because the traffic is going from every which direction. Long Branch Sligo, Long Branch Sligo area is very different from that and has a limited number of potential responses that are, you know, about traffic flow itself. So it seems like you would need to spend a lot more time getting good data and the kinds of things like looking at the license plates or the vehicles going in and out to really understand that in that kind of a neighborhood and it would be worth that additional investment. Is there some way to balance then the approach that they take to different neighborhoods based on what the potential solutions and outcomes are that could really be offered from the process?
The bare bones proposal didn't, didn't have that much community interaction. They had a very efficient community process. They were, they were very efficient about the, you know, were going to come up with a set of proposals, listing impacts, was very straightforward. So I'm not sure that that could be stretched any further. I think they only, they only presented one item that seemed superfluous and that was they suggested doing, calculating travel time and how much faster it was to go through the neighborhood than to stay on the State Highway and go through the intersection, which while it could be useful, it seemed less useful than the other parts of the study that they were proposing, but that was a minimal part of their overall proposal.
Certainly be useful in terms of communicating with State Highway Administration how their traffic signal patterns and particular devices that they use on their road are impacting our neighborhoods. I mean, it would be a good bargaining tool in that sense. It might also be useful to calculate exactly how much we need to slow down the traffic before it's more annoying to go in the neighborhood than stay on the road, but other than that, I would agree with you.
Are there other thoughts? I guess just from my experience with neighborhood traffic studies in the past, I think that it would be better to do a complete study of as many neighborhoods as we can afford rather than doing, trying to do a little bit on every neighborhood. My recollection is what tended to happen is that, you know, there would be some information and then that would cause people to ask another question or to come up with another, I mean, the folks who live in the neighborhood come up with another solution. And I think it would be very frustrating if we said, oops, that's all the money we've got, can't do any more work in here, and people were still not at the point where they had a solution which dealt with their concern. So I guess I would, if we had to go that way, I guess I would argue for getting a plan that adequately dealt with as many neighborhoods as we could and then, you know, if we need to do another round at some point, maybe we could think about doing that rather than saying to people, well, you know, sorry, we're only halfway through this discussion, but we ran out of money for your neighborhood.
I have done an impromptu study of traffic flow in my area after the installation of the roundabout and the bump out and the other installations that were done recently on Glenside and Wildwood. And I can tell you now that not only are fewer cut-through vehicles passing by, but the average speed of the cars has slowed substantially as a result of having to navigate this little mousetrap of a, and a very beautiful one, I might add, with the flowers and so forth. So it does work. How many of those can we afford all over town and whether we want them is another question.
Maybe I'll ask the neighborhood if they want to reconsider their candidacy for a study in this project.
Yeah, probably that would be, we could maybe save a few bucks.
Any other comments from the council?
I would tend to agree with the remarks you made with caveat that I would want to see my area included.
So each member of the council thinks we should do fewer areas as long as theirs is what it is.
You got it.
I know, they were prioritized. I can't remember what order they were in, but I think that this.
So you're happy with whatever approach is taken.
Okay. I don't know, have you gotten, have you gotten any useful feedback from us or?
Yes, this has been very useful.
We basically said we would like you to do all of it, but at a lower cost.
Okay.
Just like the folks say to us at Budget Time, please lower the taxes and provide more services.
And you could predict that response.
I wasn't sure, you never know.
Okay, so we're finished with this one and we'll move on to the Ethan Allen Gateway Design Sherret. Again, we're talking about the consultant.
The review of these proposals was much easier. We did receive one proposal out of four that were received from the request for proposals that was very responsive and we have gone ahead and interviewed that firm. One of the firms, as you can see, both came in at cost and had substantial sherret experience and had also demonstrated that they had worked together before on several projects, so we felt that they would work well as a team on this project. When we went through all of the proposals, none of them actually came in under the timeline. And so that's probably the main caveat for this project is that the proposed, the proposed project will come in at cost and we're very satisfied with the proposal that was put together by the team. And it's T N D, Traditional Neighborhood Design Planning Group, which is composed of several different firms and includes a market study, a transportation study, and as well as participation from both of those experts in the sherret in terms of working with the community on those aspects of the planning as well as architectural services and planning services for this area. And so we're fairly comfortable and would like to continue with the negotiation towards the contractor. towards a contract.
Could you just, I, I've gotten some comments about this, some concerns that people feel that we are bypassing sort of a public participation process on this, and I, I know we've talked about this before, but I wonder if just for information, if you could explain again what the, what the consultant would do.
The consultant is essentially being hired to not only do the design, but handle the public participation process. So as part of the, what a sherret is, is a public outreach process, and what it includes would be a kickoff meeting to hear the concerns of the community, introduce the community to some of the data that's been collected and verify that that's accurate data regarding the area, and then the team would then gather more information over a month or so, and then would come back, I'm giving you a prospit timeframe, but would then come back and do what's called a compressed design period that includes the community throughout the design process to develop a consensus design. And so what that normally includes is both an opening meeting to collect ideas of what people see at, at that area, and then the team would go back, work with both the ideas and the available data and studies that have been conducted on the area leading up to the, the sherret period, and they usually work on sites, and we would be locating a, a place that's close by, and it's usually open longer hours, so it wouldn't be open just during normal business hours, it would be open in the evening. There'd probably be not only night, evening meetings and day meetings. For example, State Highway, the team would meet with State Highway during the day to get their feedback and make sure that things are feasible. They would, they would meet with business owners probably during the day, but they would also have community meetings at night or pin-ups, which is where the community could, would have a chance to go in to, and have various ideas explained and give feedback and comments. And that, that usually includes, it's between two and a half to five days, and would have two and a half, of those five days would be community interaction, and that might be very long, very long meetings, but where people, there might be like a four-hour open house where people could come in and exchange ideas, but, or there could be a two- or three-hour workshop where, which would have intensive involvement in the design process. And then the rest of the time is compressed production time, where designers and experts, such as traffic or market, market analysis, who have a sense of what's feasible at the location, will be working with the ideas as well as all the data that's available to come up with a feasible plan. And then that's given back to the community for review, and then when that's, then, and usually what, what a consensus process does is it works towards, I'm sorry, what a sherret process does is it works towards consensus, and what you're, the goal is a feasible plan. And so that consensus is needed in order to get a feasible plan, and that's a community process. It's not a closed-door process. And so the end product is then, of that full sherret process, is then taken back, beautified, made very pretty, and then would be presented back to the community, but would also be in a book and plan form that could then be dragged around to both developers and state agencies and other people to use as, as not just a vision, but this is what we want. This is what we'll be happy with, and everyone else will be happy with.
How and to whom would we do outreach to solicit their participation in this process?
For, and for, this is usually a large community-wide meeting, and so there are, we would probably do a combination of posters, flyers, PSAs, announcements through the different media that the city has. We would write an article beforehand, we would also work with the different news media that usually publish community events. There are certain communities, such as the business community on site, that would be directly reached out to. They would be-
Neighborhood associations?
Neighborhood associations, yes.
That's very helpful, I appreciate that, thank you.
And the, and the adjacent neighborhoods are very, very important for that process.
And, and I, I can assure you that the adjacent neighborhoods are also very interested in this. And one of the questions that I got is, there was an effort made, oh, many, many years ago, to look at the Ethan Allen Intersection Area, and I don't think it ever really got off the ground, and one of the questions I got is how, how is this different than that? And my first and maybe somewhat facetious response was, well, this one might actually come up with something. But that one, I, I remember sitting through the, through the first meeting, and it was a very odd meeting because, well, maybe it wasn't the first meeting, because it, it was a planning meeting, but none of the participants, and I don't remember who they were, I know the city was a participant, the county, which at that point would have been Prince George's County, other people, had any sense of whether or when any of this would actually be implemented. And so it was a bit frustrating for some of the participants to deal with. And so this, this sounds to me to be much more concrete.
The other thing I think that is significant is that, in many senses, the, the area is, is ripe.
There are two properties that are on the market right now, and both of them are in Tacoma Park, and we have mixed-use zoning. And there's still somewhat an economy that supports development, so my relief.
And if they're, they're private properties, we can't dictate to people what happens to them, but we can, what's the word, incentivize or we can encourage certain kinds of uses by this kind of a process.
One of the, one of the things that a sherret process is used for is to give developers the assurance that if they follow a specific set of guidelines or plans, that their approval process will be much faster. And especially, all of our commercial areas do have a fairly, what would be considered an arduous development process, a redevelopment process, because there is site planning, cooperation with the city, extensive community involvement required, which for us is great because we have a lot of control, but the city has a lot of control over what happens on properties. But for a developer, it puts a lot of uncertainty into their timeline and their, and makes investors very worried. So, so this can give more certainty to the development, redevelopment process.
In other words, if an individual were interested in one of the properties that's for sale, and they wanted to know what the community wanted to be done in that property, we would have, we would be able to tell them what the community wanted, and then presumably that would speed up the approval process.
Right.
And those properties have not exactly been going like hotcakes, have they, at that corner, in any time in the recent past? And it's, they're a bit blighted now, and-
Very generous.
Yeah, therefore, that was the place, I recall, on the bus trip that we did last April, where we got out there and after surveying the back lot, which was full of trash that people had dumped there, then we scurried around to the front of the building, hoping for, for a little aesthetic reprieve, only to find that there were, were people teetering on these large boulders that pass for a sidewalk, and explaining that this is the bus stop there. You teeter on the boulder, and then when the bus comes along, you leap into the open door. And so, you know, anything that could be done to make these properties more marketable along the lines of what you were talking about, I would think it's a no-brainer, and that we should, we should make every effort we can to provide whatever buyer we manage to catch with honey or anything else that we can, we can pour on the lack of sidewalks out there, or find them in any other way, the more headaches we can relieve them of, the more likely it is they'll, they'll take a gamble. And I don't think that it is that big of a gamble, because I think there's a lot of purchasing power in the area. It just looks like hell, and it, I think it deters a lot of people from taking it seriously. But if we can show them the facts and figures as we gather them, show that the neighborhood has weighed in on it, then I think, you know, we're at least giving them a fighting chance of, of finding something good to go in there and rehabilitate the place which so badly needs it.
Any other comments? Is the council amenable to having a proposal that the TND Planning Group? We will, we'll move forward with that, too. All right, we have now reached the final item, and that's the City Manager's Quarterly Update. Thank you, Alana.
Don't worry, I'll be quick. I know it's always late by the time we get to this. Included in your agenda packet is the quarterly financial report for the quarter ended March 31st. In the executive summary, I tried to highlight things that might be of, either pique your interest or you might question. I guess the bottom line is, everything is pretty much going the way we expected it to. I don't anticipate any problems. If you kind of looked at this report compared to the revenue estimates included in my proposed budget, probably two things maybe to point out, because those things are consistent, is income tax receipts, which have historically been very difficult to project, look like they'll come in over budget, over my budgeted projections for the current year, and clearly revenues that we derive from the investment of city funds is already exceeding the budgeted figure. I think that's due to a couple of things. Certainly, there were some grant reimbursements that came in, kind of bumped up our cash flow, if you will. Interest rates have risen, and I think we're all aware of that, and I think the Director of Finance really does a great job of kind of managing the city's cash and trying to see how much we really need to have liquid and how much can afford to be invested for longer periods of time, and I think Ms. Burks does an excellent job of that. As you went through the revenue section, you may have noticed that there's some things that if you look at revenues where we were at the same period last year, might seem to cause some alarm because things look like they're down. In almost all instances, that's just a function of when we actually get like a payment from the county or a payment from the state, it's just merely a timing difference. So at this point, I don't, I don't have any concerns about where we are in the current year from a revenue standpoint. In terms of expenditures, there were some variances from last year. Most of the increases in any department are going to be largely attributable to personnel costs, obviously that's what drives most of the city's expenditures. In a few instances, that was not the case. For example, if you look at the difference between this year and last year for capital outlay, last year we had a significant amount of street work being done with the proceeds and the bonds that were taken out in '05. Public Works has made effective use of those monies, so this year you're not seeing the same level of street work, for example. In the current year as well, you'll see the effect of the Take Home Car Program, which was something the council implemented this year to enhance our, both our ability as an employer to retain good police officers and also to make us more attractive in the marketplace when we're trying to hire new officers. So everything's looking okay on the financial front. Are there any questions?
I guess none.
Just a few quick things. Included in your packet was also sort of the quarterly update that I give you on activities of staff. Certainly, there's seven and a half pages of it, so I'm not going to go through them. There are a few things that I guess I would just like to take a few minutes just to highlight, because there was a lot of good work done by the staff during the first quarter of this year. One of the things always this time of year that takes up a lot of staff time, and I think the council is aware of this, is certainly preparation of my proposed budget involves all the city departments, and certainly the staff of my office as well as the finance director are pretty much consumed by that. When I went back and looked at my calendar for February, pretty much there's a whole blanket of meetings throughout the entire month with staff. Lot of staff work done during the first quarter of each year on lobbying. That's particularly true of Suzanne Ludlow, but certainly other members of the staff participate in those efforts as needed. And this year, for the first quarter, there was also a lot of work done on the proposed construction of a gym. That occupied a lot of time. Some noteworthy things, just to touch on very briefly, as the council is aware, we did receive the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the '06 Conference Annual Financial Report from the Government Finance Officers Association. Would like to just direct the council's attention to page two. We had the opportunity in February to present service awards to a number of our employees who had hit milestones, basically at the five-year mark. We're, like any service industry, basically, our best asset is our employees. We're very fortunate that we have a number of the staff who've been here a while. And certainly noteworthy, I think many of you know Doris Rogers, who was a crossing guard with police, and last year she celebrated 35 years of working for the city, which is truly remarkable. The Housing and Community Development Department, in February, I put on a green building conference that was very well attended. There were about 250 people who came to that, and certainly that was great work by Sarah Daines and her staff on that event. One of the things as the manager that I truly value about our staff is they really do look at opportunities to look at what we're delivering in terms of services and to see if there's some gaps that we can meet. Certainly, that's true of all the departments, but just a couple of things noted in the report is the Recreation Department during the first quarter implemented a new series of sort of family-oriented events, including movie nights here at the Community Center. We had Karen McPherson join the library staff fairly recently. I don't know how many of you have had the chance to meet Karen, but she has just done a tremendous job as basically our children's librarian, and implemented a lot of new programs. And during the first quarter of this year, one of, I guess, the many examples that were fine work, but let's see, a teen book club, she got that underway, which is certainly a segment of our youth that we're always trying to look for ways to serve. I would probably be remiss if I didn't comment on the generosity of the Friends of the Library. If you look at that section of the report, you'll notice there's a number of items where I have mentioned that the program or the equipment was purchased through their efforts. In 2006, the Friends of the Library gave us almost $8,000 in either contributions of one type or another, and that has been pretty consistent throughout my almost three years with the city. They have been a wonderful asset to the library and very supportive of our activities. During the first quarter, we were very fortunate to have Chief Ron Ricucci join us, as our police department staff was able to get him on board and wrap up the police chief selection process. Would like to take this opportunity to commend Chief Ricucci for all the outreach efforts he has made with the community. That was certainly a priority of mine, and I think his sensitivity to that issue was a major factor in my decision to hire him. He understands that cross-jurisdictional cooperation is very important to the city, and not only has he done a lot of outreach with the, our residents and the business community, but he has devoted similar efforts to meeting with his colleagues in law enforcement. Of course, the fact that he was in Montgomery County for 26 years pretty much gave him a leg up since he, he knew many of these people and have worked with them. Traffic enforcement has been a major emphasis of the police department during my tenure. During the first quarter, the department made over 1,400 stops, which was a dramatic increase from last year. I think certainly that's been a continued focus, but the fact that we're much closer to being up to full staffing helps a whole lot, too, when you have more people out on the street. In my report, I noted a lot of activities being done by Mary Kendall and the Sea State staff. It is just amazing to me how much Mary and Gretchen are able to do, essentially being a, a two-person office, certainly with a lot of support from the partners. But I think a lot of the credit for what we've been able to achieve, not only in this quarter of this year, but throughout their tenure, is attributable to those two individuals, and I encourage the council, if you have a chance, to, to thank them for that, please do so. During your discussions with Ms. Blanchard, I think you've already touched on this, but there were some traffic calming projects that either got underway or got completed. The council included $100,000 in this year's budget for three primary projects, the one council member Barry alluded to. There was a sidewalk installation on Boston Avenue in Ward One, and then some traffic calming work in Miss Place Ward, Elm at Lincoln and at Auburn. So your money's been spent quickly and is basically gone at this point. And so those were just some of the highlights. Certainly, there's a lot of other good work done, but just want to take the opportunity to just mention a few things that I think the staff did very well during the quarter. The last item that I had, and this will just be quick, I don't really have too much to say on it, as a supplemental item I passed out this evening, is on one of the orange sheets. It's just a quarterly update on the work that staff and council have done on the priorities that you all adopted in about a year ago, I guess just a little over a year ago, and you can certainly take the opportunity to read that. I guess what I would say, I personally have been very pleased with the progress I think we have all made. I think that the council, having gone through this planning process and has really provided staff with some very clear direction of how you want us to be spending our time, and if there's some choices, I think the direction you provided me is very helpful in my working with staff in terms of- in my working with staff in terms of what they should focus on and if they get into a jam, what can maybe get set aside. I think generally, we are very in line and on target with the implementation plan we had actually set forward a, a year ago. One of the things I do plan to do before we get to the second half of this calendar year is to sit down with the staff, look at the implementation plans we had last updated, I think in August, and kind of see maybe where some adjustment is needed. So, once we finish that process, obviously, I'll be sharing that with the council. So, if there's any questions about anything, be happy to answer them. I do realize it's late and don't want to try to keep it too much longer.
I just have one question. In my ongoing quest to become better at understanding fiscal management, on page-
Expenditures?
Oh, yeah, that's good. General fund expenditures for the nine months ended March 31st, 2007. The column that says percent unexpended, now, since this is three quarters of the way through the year, you would expect that three quarters of the money would be spent and 25% would be unexpended in general. And most of the numbers are pretty close to that, except Recreation here is at 46% unexpended and Housing and Community Development at 44% unexpended. And then, there's the non-departmental one stands out. But in the program areas, I mean, you would kind of think that would be relatively stable over the course of the year. Have any insights into that?
I, I'd be happy to look at that a little bit more closely. I know a lot of the full-time staff in Recreation is budgeted in the Administration Cost Center. They did have some vacancies during the year. Some of those positions were filled during the quarter. I believe that may account for some of it, Councilmember Clay, but I'd be happy to double-check that.
The big numbers are in athletic fields and facilities and before and after school.
If I had to take a guess, that a lot of the field grooming takes place at certain times of the year, but I'd be happy to check that out rather than just speak off the cuff.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, in terms of Housing and Community Development, I think I can probably address that one a little bit more. One of the, the biggest difference in the numbers is going to be in the Community Development Division. A lot of the planning money that you were just talking about this evening, the Neighborhood Traffic Studies, the Design Sherret, is all in that particular cost center and that money has not been expended yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Barbara, I'd like to thank you for bird-dogging the re-engineered memorial elevator, which I had an opportunity to get in this evening and I was so delighted that when I pushed a button, something happened, that I continued to ride up and down. And that's why I was late by an hour this evening. So, good to see that.
I'm glad it was a pleasant experience for you, Councilmember Barry.
Good to see that.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Barb, there's, it's a delight to receive the report. So many good things have happened and I appreciate that. I'd just like to highlight a couple of things myself. I, I really appreciate the organizing that your office has done with the help of Suzanne Ludlow and, and getting us more organized in our lobbying efforts in the interests, in the various interests of the city. I think that's an area that's really grown over the last year or so. I would also just like to again compliment your staff on the snapshots program. I think that's a, showcases our city to the county in such a nice way. I appreciate that. The Housing and Community Development, I would like to thank for the great work of tenant organizing they're doing and continue to do in Ward 4 and throughout the city. I think that's a real benefit to the, to the city. The library is just always, I, I think the library is, is the way I would like all the city departments to be run. You never hear problems from the library. Things always seem to work pretty smoothly as long as the, the roof doesn't leak. And I too would like to thank the Friends of the Library for their, for their help. I compliment you again on your selection of Chief Rucucci for the, for the city. And I'm constantly amazed to, to see him everywhere and at everything and still appears to be doing a great job in changing the face of our police department. The Public Works has, has been quiet from my perspective and I make sure that it's a good thing, yes. Recreation is another matter that I guess we'll talk about at another time. But I have one question that is regarding our new bus. That was something you didn't highlight in your report. We had that bus now for how long? A couple of months now? And I'm, I'm concerned I don't see it around town very much and I wondered if maybe you could give me a status on that bus?
Yeah. I can't sit here and tell you how many times it's been used. I can tell you it was put into service last week. There was a, a funeral that many of the residents of Victory Tower wanted to attend. They had approached me about asking if the city could assist them with transportation. So, I know it was put into service last week. I can certainly talk to Ms. Hayden about that. I don't pretend Councilmember Siemens to know every time it's been put in use. There were some delays, obviously, in terms of getting a driver.
Do we now have staff members who have their commercial driver's license so they can operate it?
I'm not sure about that. I'd like to check with her. Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean that's not the case.
I appreciate your checking that because, as I say, I'm concerned I don't see the bus in use very much and, and yet, we've known that this bus was going to be here for some time. So, I would hope that we have someone who can drive it and that we can use it for our programs. Other than that-
I know we do, yeah, I know we have at least one individual under a contractual arrangement. My understanding in talking to Ms. Breakaway, who obviously deals with the CDL program quite a bit, is it's not the easiest test to pass even for people who are probably more engaged in kind of skilled labor in terms of driving it. But I know we do have at least one individual under contract that Ruck has identified and possibly more, but I'll ask Ms. Hayden for an update and get that information to you.
Appreciate it. Other than that, I thank you. I thank you for the financial award and for the great quarter. Thank you.
Just wanted to very quickly note that I think that the hiring of Chief Rucucci is another example of how it pays off to spend a great deal of time at the beginning, hiring the right person. I know you spent a very large amount of time doing recruiting and interviewing and selection, but I think it's going to greatly relieve you of dealing with potential problems in the police department.
It already has.
Nothing else? Nothing else worth hearing?